Good evening. I'm going to start with the script for the remotely conducted open meetings as a preliminary matter. This is Justine St. John, Chair of the Select Board. Permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. David?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Armand? Okay. Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Greg?
Yep.
Becky? Yep. And then I see Megan and Justin DiMarco and several Chief Noble, several other members on as well. Good evening. This open meeting of the Maynard Select Board is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings, and as such, the governor's orders suspend the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. For this meeting, the Select Board is convening by video conference via Zoom, as posted on the town's website identifying how the public may join. It is also being streamed live on Facebook, but I want to note that the chat and the and the Facebook Live comments are not monitored, they're not answered. So if you have something that you want to speak about, it does have to be in this Zoom setting here. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference accordingly. Please be aware that other folks may be able to see you and to take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. All materials for this meeting, except any executive session materials, are available on Board Docs, and we recommend the members and the public follow the agenda as posted on Board Docs unless I know it otherwise. And again, the best way to do that is go to the main, excuse me, Town of Maynard page, go to the Board of Selectmen, go to tonight's agenda packet, and that's you'll find all the documents in there. We are now turning to the first item on the agenda before we do permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda after they conclude their remarks. That I will go down the line of members inviting each to, by name, to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Further, please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. Please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until the chair yields a floor to you and state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in colloquy with other members, please do so through the chair taking care to identify yourself. For items of public comments, after members have spoken, the chair will afford public comments as follows. The chair will ask first ask members of the public who wish to speak to identify their names and addresses only. Once the chair has a list of all public commentators, we'll call on each by name and afford three minutes for any comments. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. So all of that being said, the next item on the agenda is public comments. Do I have any public comments at this time? Hi, Armand.
Hello.
Nope, no problem at all. So hearing no public comments, I was going to say I'm going to turn it over to Town Administrator Greg Johnson with another public comment. Lydia?
Yeah, hi, sorry, I'm trying to figure out how to raise my hand on the screen and I couldn't do it. So I would like to speak in support of Indigenous Peoples' Day.
Okay.
So I support the adoption of Indigenous Peoples' Day for many reasons. I want to focus on the reason why Maynard specifically needs to recognize it. Christopher Columbus is a divisive symbol of the past. We all know this, a past that is fraught with genocide, violence, European colonization, white supremacy. He is the co-author of a false narrative about the founding of this nation, and he is the beginning of the us versus them in this country. During the course of the last year, the 2020 election became the catalyst for some of the greatest rifts between political parties, families, friends, colleagues, coworkers that I have ever experienced in my life. Hatred and anger ran amok on both sides. Everyone took a side and stopped listening and even talking to those who opposed them. A similar dynamic is now rearing its ugly head in our community again, called out by the Maynard 2021 municipal elections. Again, people are taking sides and declaring war against each other. The disgusting libelous posts and articles that I have seen are atrocious and make this town that we all purport to love a mockery in the eyes of the surrounding communities. If we want to unify people, we cannot continue to memorialize and celebrate figures who are divisive. If we want to be an inclusive community, we need to create a safe space for those who want to be included. When MLK Junior Day was first made a national holiday, there were several states that refused to acknowledge it. Eventually, they did, and now, years later, MLK Day is a big part of our curriculum in our schools and an important topic of conversation that people now widely accept. It's uncomfortable now to talk about Indigenous Peoples' Day. A lot of people either don't understand why it's necessary or they see it as a rejection of our history. It's not. It is including all voices in our history, and I think it's a really, really important place to start. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Lydia. Anyone else have any other public comments before I turn it over to Greg? Sorry about that.
Um, I would also like to comment, and I also couldn't figure out how to raise my hand. This is Ami Ledwell. I'm gonna start my video here because I cut it off. I also would like to speak on behalf of Indigenous Peoples' Day. As somebody who is of native heritage in this community, I am part of the Wampanoag tribe, and it is historically accurate for me that my history has been erased year after year after year in favor of a history that is a false narrative, honestly, that doesn't tell the truth about what happened and that celebrates somebody who honestly shouldn't be celebrated anymore. When we know better, we should do better, and we should do better not just for ourselves and not just for our community and not even just because other people are doing it. We should do this for our children so that they learn and do better. So I really feel strongly that we should adopt Indigenous Peoples' Day in lieu of St. Columbus Day. Sorry, you can tell which holiday is coming tomorrow. And really, it's a very important step that I think that you'll see more and more towns and cities and states will be taking, and we will be proud of our efforts to do so. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
All right. I'm sorry, Madam Chair. Amy, what's your address? So we can have it for a minute.
Three Glen Drive.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else? All right. So Greg?
Oh, thank you, Madam Chair. So not to take up too much time, but I do want to take the opportunity and to introduce the new town accountant to all 30, 41 people on this call. So I'm excited, and I know everyone else in town staff is excited. So Lori Plord, if you can find her in your, in your, you know, Hollywood squares here. Lori Plord is the new town accountant as of yesterday. So we're all excited. So can you say?
Lori, can you, can you speak up so that you can like be highlighted? I can't find you on the list.
How you doing?
Okay.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you.
So we're all thrilled. So, you know, easy job being the town accountant for a 40-plus million dollar budget and everything else that we have going on in town. But no, she'll, she'll pick it up. We have a lot of faith in her, and so it's all very exciting. So we're, we're getting a team, and it's exciting to have a finance team. And anyways, thank you. Welcome aboard.
Look forward to working with you, Laurie. You know, hopefully you get, you can tolerate us.
Thank you. I look forward to working with you, too. We promise not to overwhelm you too much the first week.
That's good. First week's a little, first couple of days are a little overwhelming, but I know it'll get easier. Absolutely.
It doesn't. Greg made no such promise, so.
No, I did not. She's seen my list. She's, yeah.
Greg, you're not supposed to scare her.
He's probably going to start with cutting the budget. That's what he's going to start with.
That's what be what she tells me to do.
Oh, okay.
All right, well, thank you, Madam Chair.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Laurie. Thank you very much.
Welcome aboard.
All right, so then we will move on to the next item, which is the acceptance of minutes. I will entertain a motion.
Motion, move to accept and approve the meeting minutes of March 2, 2021, as shown in authorizing the use of digital signatures if approved.
Second.
Excellent. Anyone have any questions, comments, concerns regarding the minutes? All right. All in favor? Chris?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
And I am a yes. All right. Next is item three with correspondences. I will entertain a motion.
I'll move to accept and approve correspondences A through E as shown.
Second.
Thank you, Armand. Anyone have any comments, questions about any of the correspondences? All right. I wanted to want to say a special thank you to Becky Moska, Karen Fay, Wayne Stanley, Jeremy Robichaud, and more, hold on, and Marion Harold, who received a letter of, you know, a letter of thank you for their hard work helping a former resident and helped them do some research, and it really made a difference for this resident. And she wanted to recognize those staff members for going above and beyond. So we all know that we have great staff in town, but you know, it's great to hear that that other people realize that, too. All right. All in favor? David?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
And I am a yes. All right. Next, consent agenda. I will entertain a motion.
Move to approve the consent item A as presented, authorizing use of digital signature if applicable or approved.
Second.
Thank you, Chris. Any comments about this? My one question was going to be, there isn't a food shack, correct? Okay, all right. So that was, that was an error. Okay.
Not that I'm aware of. There's no food shack there.
All right, I just wanted to make sure. Okay. Um. Okay. All in favor? David?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
And I am a yes. All right. Next is going to be item number five. The common victor and entertainment application. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve the common vic license, common victor or an entertainment application for licenses for Maynard Wine and Spirits, Inc., doing business as or DBA, spirits of Maynard for Digital Way with manager owner Joseph Saya, as presented, authorizing use of digital signatures if approved.
Second.
All right. Um, Greg? Would you like to speak to this?
Yeah, sure. Just briefly said, we've been seeing these gentlemen for a couple of months now as they've, as they've reestablished themselves over next to Market Basket in Maynard Crossing. So this is the common vic and entertainment license, but the board had already approved the liquor licenses. So they have their package store. And they might be on, are this, are the Saya, Saya, Saya's, are they on?
Hello, yes, hello.
Hey, Joe, so.
Going, I mean, I'm here. Hi, guys.
What's your plan, Joe? What do you, why do you want to come and vic in an entertainment license?
Unusual or not eligible, it's just sort of a function of the process and how the MHC manages the abundance of applications in comparison to the amount of credits they have to allocate statewide.
Okay. Jeff, did that help clarify?
Yes.
Anyone else have any other questions? All right. So all in favor of approving the extension, David?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And I am yes. So good luck.
Good luck.
Can't wait to hear.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Guess we hope not to see you in three months.
Thanks, everyone.
All right, next is going to be, item is renaming an observed holiday. And this is going to be, I'm going to table the motion for the moment because there's a presentation that's going to happen. So Greg, do you have anything to contribute yet? Okay.
No, just to tee up that that we received a number of statements that Becky was good enough to put to upload for the for the board and for the public to review.
Yes, thank you. And those are all in public comment. So if anybody has any questions, or if they want to follow, if they want to look at any of the statements, those are all listed in the agenda under public comment. So I am going, I know the person who reached out to us was Maggie Day. Is Maggie on the call?
Yes, I am.
Hi Maggie, how are you?
Great, thanks.
All right, so do you want to do an introduction?
Yes, I'm Maggie Day and I've lived in Maynard for about 20 years now. Since retiring and becoming a grandmother, I've become engaged in various town activities that promote diversity and social justice. I'm proud to be a longtime volunteer at Open Table, a substitute teacher in the Maynard schools, and a member of the Maynard Anti-Racism Alliance, otherwise known as Mara. I'd like to start tonight with a land acknowledgement. We acknowledge that most of us are joining this meeting tonight from homes that are on the occupied territory of the Nipmuck or freshwater people. We acknowledge the painful history of enslavement, genocide, and forced removal and displacement of the Nipmuck from this territory. We also acknowledge the persistence with which the Nipmuck Nation has retained their culture, language, and values, and their ancestral home on the Hassanamisco Reservation in nearby Grafton. On behalf of Mara's Indigenous Peoples Task Force, I would like to propose that Maynard celebrate Indigenous Peoples' Day instead of Columbus Day on the second Monday in October. Recognizing the true histories of colonialism, genocide, and racism that Indigenous peoples have experienced and continue to face, and celebrating their strength, resilience, and survival is an important first step towards reconciliation. Our Indigenous friends and neighbors consider changing Columbus Day to Indigenous Peoples' Day as an important first step toward acknowledging the genocide of millions of their ancestors and the theft of their homelands that began with the arrival of Columbus, as well as a recognition of Columbus's role in the kidnapping and enslavement of millions of African people. It's a meaningful symbolic gesture to begin addressing the harm caused to Indigenous peoples by the many years of celebrating Columbus as a hero. This change is consistent with the work that Mara has done with Maynard in the past year and the wishes of over 700 Maynard residents who are involved in our work. In the past year, the school committee voted unanimously to recognize Indigenous Peoples' Day on the district calendar. K-12 students were presented with resources and activities to celebrate Indigenous Peoples' Day. Over 200 people registered for a webinar jointly sponsored by Mara and the schools, presented by an Indigenous educator on implicit bias and why we need Indigenous Peoples' Day. Over 200 people registered for a film screening and discussion of Gather, which addressed Indigenous food sovereignty. Our book drive raised over $2,000 to help diversify books available in the Maynard schools, and nearly 100 people registered to attend Martin Luther King Day Junior events less than two months ago. Last night, the Human Relations Committee voted unanimously to endorse the adoption of Indigenous Peoples' Day in Maynard. I'm proud that the Select Board is now looking to make Maynard a leader in my home state of Massachusetts in making this important change. The harm of colonization began here over 400 years ago with the theft of indigenous land and erasure of indigenous voices. The language that we use on our town website, in our calendar of events, and in our contracts reflect our values as a town. Adopting this resolution is a public statement that our Select Board members are committed to being leaders for equity and justice. This change is not only important to me as a community member, it's also very personal. I raised my Lakota daughter in a neighboring town, and I saw firsthand the harm of colonization. My four-year-old Lakota grandson is growing up in Maynard, and he will start school in 2022. I don't want him to experience the same erasure and racism that my daughter endured. I'm hopeful that his peers and his teachers will know Indigenous history and be aware of contemporary Indigenous changemakers like Madam Secretary Deb Holland, our new historic Secretary of the Interior. Let's make Maynard a leader in beginning the healing and uplifting of Indigenous voices. Now, I am privileged to introduce to you two Indigenous women who are joining us tonight. Madawi Monroe is the co-leader of United American Indians of New England and founder of IndigenousPeoplesDayMass.org, the statewide coalition for Indigenous Peoples' Day, and Charlie Naru will be representing the United Confederation of Taino People. I'd like to turn it over to Madawi.
My name is Madawi, I'm Lakota. I've lived in Massachusetts for decades now, and I'm very happy to be talking to people in Maynard. I see some people that I know here on this meeting, and you know, I really appreciate being able to speak to you tonight, and you're taking the time to listen. I'm speaking to you from the territory shared by Nipmuck and Massachusetts people right now. We've worked to help bring forward Indigenous Peoples' Day resolutions in Cambridge, Newton, Marblehead, Melrose, and other towns. And as you know, many school systems and state have also chosen to adopt Indigenous Peoples' Day, very often being led by the youth who say, why have you been lying to us? And why are we continuing to celebrate this? Indigenous people have been asking since the 1970s for Indigenous Peoples' Day to be recognized. It's not a new request. And we do this in order to educate the public about the crimes of Columbus and about the Indigenous past and present of where they live. Nearly all of us were falsely taught that Columbus discovered America. Indigenous people were not discovered by anybody, since we were already here and we certainly were not lost. We did not need to have civilization or spirituality brought to us, since we already had many civilizations and spiritual beliefs. We had and have the inherent right to continue to live in our own ways, on our own lands. Columbus's policies on the islands where he landed, including slave labor, starvation, sex trafficking, and slaughter, resulted in the near-complete genocide of the Indigenous peoples of Haiti, the Dominican Republic, Cuba, Puerto Rico, and other places where the Spanish invaded. And following me, Charlie Naru will be speaking much more about that and the impact on her own Taino people. What happened is historical fact, it's not a matter of interpretation. Celebrating Columbus erases centuries of Indigenous reality. It makes it easier for non-native people to marginalize and to ignore us when we talk about our history and current issues, such as our very high rates of COVID deaths, the thousands of missing and murdered Indigenous women, girls, and two spirits, and tens of thousands of our people without safe drinking water. It's an effort to silence us and to make us invisible. While glorifying Columbus sends a cruel message to Indigenous children, it also sends a wrong message to non-native kids, encouraging them to believe Indigenous peoples were somehow waiting to be discovered and misrepresenting Columbus's supposed heroism. A recent poll showed that 2/3 of non-natives did not personally know an Indigenous person, and 40% thought we were extinct. Indigenous people rarely appear in discussions about race or in the media, except as stereotypes. Few non-natives in Massachusetts have considered the history of the area prior to European colonization, and often do not even know the name of the tribal nation on whose traditional lands they live. Our existence is nearly erased. Indigenous Peoples' Day brings something positive to the town in place of Columbus Day. It's also a positive celebration of the tribal nations from Massachusetts, such as the Wampanoag, Nipmuck, and Massachusetts, and people from hundreds of other Indigenous nations who live in the area. Finally, Indigenous Peoples' Day is an opportunity to better appreciate how we can all become allies in breaking down the remaining cultural and institutional barriers of discrimination. We don't believe that celebrating Columbus Day reflects the values of the town of Maynard. So we're asking for the support of the Select Board in making this change. Thank you, and I would like to turn it over to Charlie Naru, please.
Okay. Taiguay, Daiiri, Charlie Naru, Seneco Kakona, Hauum Mabrika. Good evening, my name is Charlie Naru. I bring abundant blessings, and thanks for welcoming me to this gathering. I am a resident of Newton, and as you all know, Newton has already changed Columbus Day to Indigenous Peoples' Day. We're very proud of that. I am a descendant of the original Indigenous First Nations of the Caribbean, people known as the Taino, the First Nations to encounter Columbus, remembering that Columbus never set foot in North America. I respectfully send you this message with the intention of helping you understand why honoring Columbus, whose legacy is one of death and destruction, should not be celebrated. This message is in no way seek to render negative thoughts and/or ideas against the honest and good contributions of the Italian-American communities of Maynard or anywhere. Rather, we seek to educate others with respect to the truth about Columbus. What I'm about to share with you right now are actual facts. Columbus was not even Italian. No one really knows where he came from, other than he was born in 1451 in the Gruelius capital of Genoa, Italy as unified country did not exist until March 17, 1861. Because Irizarry and a number of other historians argue Columbus was actually Jewish, linguistics traits in his writings led them to believe Columbus was raised learning Landino, a hybrid form of Castilian Spanish comparable to Yiddish, which was spoken by Spain's Sephardic Jewish community. Columbus did not discover anything. How can you discover a land that already has inhabitants? On his first trip in 1492, Columbus encountered the Indigenous Luque Yan, Taino, Arawak, on Guanahani, today San Salvador island in the Bahamas. Christopher Columbus wasn't even the first European explorer to arrive in the Americas. The Vikings, led by Leif Erikson, sailed to Newfoundland, Canada in 1,000 AD. There are also theories that the Irish arrived far before the Vikings, and that the Chinese and Polynesians may have also visited the Americas before Columbus. Not only did Columbus not discover anything, but he had zero respect for those who already lived in the areas he visited. Upon landing on Guanahang on October 12, 1492, he claimed the land for Spain despite it already being Indigenous land. Immediately upon arrival, Columbus noted that the Tainos were kind and giving, and that he planned to use that kindness against them. What resulted was genocide, rape, mutilations, and a variety of other horrible and more inhumane atrocities. Christopher Columbus's behavior, including cutting off my ancestors' hands if they didn't gather enough gold, was so atrocious that he and his brothers were arrested after complaints by Spanish settlers and friars was sent back to Spain in chains in 1500. He was the initiator of the Indigenous slave trade. Christopher Columbus was horrendous person who enslaved Indigenous peoples of the lands he traveled to. He was the first to send people as slaves across the Atlantic to Spain. In his own words, he wrote how young Indigenous girls as young as 10 and 11 years old were to be made available to men. Men were raped, pillaged, and murdered at will. This was condoned by this awful man. Celebrating Columbus is celebrating hate, racism, and a legacy that has brought nothing but pain and suffering to millions upon millions of Indigenous people. We must not only stop celebrating this man, but we must also teach our children the truth. We must also seek to erase this day from the federal calendar and national holidays. The lies of history need to be rewritten, not just for reparations, but for the future of our Indigenous children. As the mother of a 10-year-old Native boy, I teach my son every day of our ways, and he knows the truth about what our people have endured and still dealing with today. He has come face to face already with the hate and violence that comes with being Indigenous. He was bullied, physically attacked, and forced by a schoolteacher to wear a conquistador hat to represent a holiday that we do not celebrate. The teacher disregarded his cries and pleas, which made him feel worthless, meaningless, and discriminated against. I never want my son to ever have to feel like that again. Making this change is a step forward to the right direction. Now, I have I have asked my son if he wanted. Give me one second, I'm trying to log into. I want to share with you my son because he wanted. I asked him if he could come on so he can give his little share, but he did this for the same reason, IPD for Newton. He didn't want to come on because it just, it hits heartstrings. But if you can hear.
My name is Thadoniki. It means strong heart in my Taino Indigenous language. I am nine years old. I want Christopher Columbus Day changed to Indigenous Peoples' Day because he was a bad person, but mainly because the schools I went to would make me read fake books about him and color the hats that they wore and force me to wear them. He was a, and say that he was a good person. I want the day changed to make me feel good about myself. Most people don't know this, but I used to get bullied at school. I would get punched, kicked, and called very bad names. Two kids would hold me while another two kids would punch me, all because I'm Native. Their comments about my culture and my long hair was very hurtful and racist. I had the worst time of my life. I wanted to die. I would come home telling my mom I wanted to end my life. Having Indigenous Peoples' Day will make me feel proud to live in Newton and go to Newton Public School.
Again, it was for Newton, but he didn't want to come on because it just hurts him so much to feel the way that he felt. So he just asked me if I can just reshare what he had already said. So with that being said, so Maynard, if you want to do what's right, please do what's right and change Columbus Day to Indigenous Peoples' Day. Thank you.
Can I just add that I just, and that is exactly what I want to prevent from happening to my grandson. I know Vinnie, and he's an awesome kid, and, and my little Declan loves Vinnie and looks forward to being able to see him at Powwow again. But you know, that, that is the reality of what we're doing to our children, and our children are our future.
Okay, all right, thank you very much. What I will do now is, I know that there are some members of the community that have reached out and said they do want to speak. I know we, like I said, I will ask if you've, if you've submitted a comment that we have read it. I'm speaking for myself, but I'm speaking for my board members as well. But if there's anyone else who wants to add something, I'll absolutely allow a couple, at least, if you'd like to speak. Anyone? All right. Does any of my board members have any comments or questions at this time?
Greg, have you had an opportunity to look at the issue pertaining, I mentioned it to you at one point, pertaining to contractual language that might exist in Maynard contracts? And if Columbus Day is mentioned in a contract, does changing the name before those contracts are switched have any implications at all relative to the contracts themselves?
No, that's a minor change. So as the contracts go, it's still recognizing the actual date. So it'll be listed as the second week in October, or, or not necessarily, but even if it just says Columbus Day, the, the inference is that it, that it's been referenced to what the state or nationally recognized holiday is. So I think we would, we would go through our contracts, primarily our collective bargaining agreements with the unions, and make sure that, that they're an acknowledgement of the change. But that's in, that's not materialistic, so I don't think it'd be an issue.
And then if I may ask of the women who spoke, what is going on at the national level, if anything, to address the same issue? Given that Columbus Day per se is a national holiday, what's going on at the national level to try to address the same issue?
If I may, there has been legislation brought by a few people nationally that hasn't gone anywhere, as you can imagine, during the last four years. Shall we say it didn't get very far? I'm not sure what will happen with it now. But I can tell you that we have introduced a bill at the Massachusetts State House that calls for a statewide Indigenous Peoples' Day instead of Columbus Day. And you know, when we have people and towns that support Indigenous Peoples' Day, we ask them to help with, to support that bill, and to get their state reps and state senators to support that bill as well, and you know, to take any other action they may want to take to help to support. But meanwhile, it's really important that until that day happens, when Massachusetts, like Maine and Vermont and some other states gets rid of Columbus Day once and for all, it's really important that individual towns and cities take this step because it makes a big difference within your town. We've seen that, you know, in every single place where it's happened. It's been really meaningful to a lot of people in each town and city where it's happened. And it's amazing to see communities come together to work on how to celebrate Columbus, excuse me, how to celebrate Indigenous Peoples' Day, and how to think about their town history in a very different way, too.
Thank you.
My one question is, how many towns in Massachusetts have adopted this?
I can send you the list, I don't know, I can't just say it like the alphabet.
Okay. I don't want the names of them, but I was just curious, like, you know.
More than a dozen, more than a dozen.
Okay, all right. Okay. Anyone else have any questions? Jeff, I saw you unmuted, do you have a comment, anything?
No, I think what I would have to say has already been covered quite eloquently. I would just add, I would imagine the more towns that adopt this would, would encourage the state legislator to, to move a little quicker than they clearly are right now. So that's just in addition to in our own town, it helps influence things at the state level, and we, we often forget about that aspect in a lot of things that we do at the sport.
Okay, so, and I just want to clarify, so if, if this is something that we do, what we would be doing is actually, there, there isn't a whole lot that the town actually does to celebrate Columbus Day. It's, it's a matter of, it's a matter of changing the contracts, I think. And I don't even think it's listed in the bylaws or the town charter. So it would, the vote would be to just change the contracts to reflect Indigenous Peoples' Day now.
Well, that's the, I'm sorry, please go ahead.
It's okay, the idea is to change the calendar in town. The idea is that the sign on, on Town Hall and the calendar from Town Hall and any other calendars or public things for the second Monday in October, what would say Indigenous Peoples' Day? It sends a message, and I can tell you, in fact, that in some school systems, they, they, once they made the change, they chose to send a letter home to all the families in the school system, explaining about the change and what it meant, and how they were going to reconsider how they teach about Columbus and Indigenous people within the school system. All of those things are important.
Oh, absolutely, and I do, so I did check before we, or I'd asked Greg to check as far as, we, we really don't have any town calendars per se. So, so that's why I was trying to figure out really the impact of what we're, what, what it was, you know. So that's, that was kind of what I was curious.
Would it impact the, the businesses in town? For example, the new Maynard crossings?
We, well, they're, they're a private entity, so we don't have any ability to influence what they would say or do. They have to abide by the terms of any contracts that we may have with them, right? So, so we do have a memorandum agreement, which is kind of like a development agreement. So if there, and there are, there are allusions or references to holidays, because they have to abide by holidays. And so to them, I'm sure, I'm sure the name of the holiday is not as important as what day they can't work. And then, so we notify them either way.
Madam Chair, may I say something?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you. So the Human Relations Committee was discussing last night creating a calendar on the, on the website and on, on the Human Relations Committee website, or portion of the town website, to, to denote cultural holidays, and you know, this being an important one. And, and I think when we talk about, you know, changing the name, really wanting it to be more than just a name change and kind of thinking through, well, what does it mean to acknowledge Indigenous Peoples' Day? To kind of think about it as, you know, as a committee, we can think about it and talk, you know, work with Mara and work with the schools, perhaps really think through, you know, what does it mean to, to acknowledge? And what does it mean to understand that we are living on someone else's land? And to kind of grapple with settler policies and the impact of settler policies? And so I think there's a lot of work and a lot of thinking and a lot of reflection, and it, it can take some time, and it's a process. And so I like the idea of, you know, changing the words and changing the calendars and creating a calendar. And I, I also hope that as a municipality, that there's some, some thought and, and reflection put, put into it on a deeper level.
Okay, thank you. And I, that's where I'm, I'm trying to nail down. Okay, thank you. I, and I, that's where I'm, I'm trying to nail down and, and I'm sorry, I'm, I'm kind of talking through it a little bit, but I'm trying to it, because the municipality's reach isn't as broad as like an organization like, you know, the Human Relations Committee or Mara or something, you know, as far as a just town business goes. It doesn't have the reach of, of, you know, talking to businesses or encouraging businesses just to celebrate one or the other or, or things like that. So that's where I was trying to kind of nail down what the actual change would mean for the minute, the actual business of the town. So that's what I was trying to get at.
I'd like to push back against it just a little. I think that the, the tone we set and the language that we use, even if it's outside the actual language that say on the calendar is very important and is, is heard by, you know, the entire town and certainly all the committees and boards, um, you know, that, that do a lot of the very hard work to make this town run smoothly. So I, I do, you know, I, I understand what you're trying to say, but I think that just the languages that we're adopting here that goes beyond the actual text change on the calendar does have, as we've heard, great weight and significance. So I do want to acknowledge that.
And as we're celebrating, um, a his, a big historical moment for Maynard, I think this is something that we can bring into that conversation as well.
All right.
This, this, I can never say the word right. So, but you guys, everything, yes, everyone knows what I mean.
All right. So does anybody else have any other questions, comments regarding this?
I see Natasha has her hand raised.
Oh, yep. Sorry. Go ahead Natasha.
Hi, thank you. Can you hear me? Okay?
Yeah.
Um, so just on the heels of what, what Jeff mentioned, I, I, I really think it's language matters. And I think coming off of the select boards change themselves, although felt minor to some people, it is significant and it is impactful. And it impacts some people more so than others. It's inclusion and it's really sets the tone of we hold our community of all areas of all genders, race, um, important. And so although it may be less important for some, I think it's that the select boards, um, influence that really can push things forward and to carry things on. So municipality, um, like explicit change probably feels less significant. But I think, um, momentum and emotional change and relevance to people who fall within these areas that are impactful, I think it's quite relevant for them because who doesn't want to be part of a community that says, no, they, I matter and the language that my town uses is important to them. And so I want to be part of this community even more. So I just wanted to clarify that, um, again, kind of coming off of the heels of the select board change. I feel it's along those same lines. It's important for some, not necessarily for everybody, but I think it's the right message that the leaders of this town should be, um, considering. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, um, Ami, go ahead. Here I'm mute.
Um, I want to, and, and I heard Natasha say this right towards the end too. I want to, um, specify the importance of the word leadership. I think that Maggie brought that up earlier as well as Natasha. I think that it shows the leadership of this town showing what's important in this town. So while the changes to the municipality may be small, things like contractual changes or, you know, an official town calendar change that maybe fewer people need, you know, I think that the, the, the leadership that you show doing this is so impactful and that the representation does have huge impact. And that impact, even though it doesn't necessarily show in every single place, it's, it's felt in every single place. So that piece is the piece that I, I just want everyone to take a moment to reflect on is how, how to be good leaders in this community and how to show the kids in this community how to be good leaders. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Uh, any more of my board members have anything else to add? All right. Um, the one thing, so there, there are a number of different ways that there, there are a few different ways that this can happen and you know, and, and one of them is by, um, you know, select, so, so I, I think I've consulted with town council and there's, there's, there's different ways that this can change. And one is by going to town meeting. Um, and one is by the selectmen, um, or the, the select board, um, voting. So I'm not prepared tonight myself, but again, I'm only one member, um, to make a decision tonight. Um, you know, I, I think there's some value of, of having the, the town as, as a voting body, the way that actually Jeff brought up, or no, um, Natasha brought up the select board. Um, you know, that, that, that was, that was something that was, you know, voted on by the town. Um, so I, I'm not quite, I'm not sold on, on making that decision tonight, um, but I am willing to hear from my board members as to how they feel about it.
I think what we're, we're looking at here is you know, as, as was mentioned during the presentation that these are our facts. These are not things that are up for debate. And I think when we relegate that to the town, we're saying that these are kind of opinions, which is just not the case here. And I think, I think to show the kind of leadership that we're being asked to show right now, we need to look at the facts that have been presented and say, yes, this is the correct statement and that we can do that independently. Um, and that's what we've been elected to do. And so I, I would prefer to do it as a board to make a strong statement that this is the kind of leadership we wish to show. Um, so that's, that's my preference on that question.
All right. Thank you, Jeff. Uh, anyone else? All right. I have one saying, okay, um, so go ahead.
What I'm just going to ask, since you took, talked to town council today, did they give you an idea of what the, um, you know, what, what the breakdown was of communities have done this either through a town meeting vote or a select board vote? Was there?
They did not. They said that there's, so you know, because there's other ones that just do a bylaw change, but we don't have anything in our bylaws. So, um, so she said it was kind of a variety of, of different ways. Um, I mean, I can get those, I can get that information and, and bring it back to the next meeting. That's not a problem.
I, I don't, I mean, I'm not disputing the facts as they were presented by anybody that presented facts tonight. And I'm not, um, I listened to the same facts. I think it was two weeks ago, Catherine, when we did it with the, um, Human Relations Committee two or three weeks ago. And again, we talked about it last night in that committee and I supported the idea. And I, and I do support the idea, but I, I also am kind of, um, aware that, um, there's a, there is, there has been a lot of discussion about it in, in certain circles in town and, and from both sides. And I don't know that, you know, that it's, um, I don't know that it's something that we are, uh, we should be deciding considering it, it's a national issue and it's a, um, you know, it's a state issue in, in other issues. I don't know that it's, you know, ours only to decide when there's, um, you know, 10,000 people living in town. But I, you know, personally, I, I don't have a problem with it. I, I support it. I, um, don't disagree with the facts or anything like that, but I just don't know that it's solely our responsibility when it's something that's, um, really is kind of outside the scope of just the town. But that's only an opinion.
All right. Uh, David, do you have anything?
I'm always, um, first off, it's, it's a difficult story to hear. For, for those of us who, as it was described, were, were raised with the stories that have been told. And as time has gone on and I, like Chris has said, have come to realize that what I had been told and taught i- is not the reality of historical fact. Uh, and, and I think for anybody who is in that situation, it's like when the 10 year old learns about, you know, the guy at Christmas time, it's like, what? What do you mean? It's, it becomes very, very shocking to the individual and to have lived through that to, to not be a person of, of, you know, native blood that I don't understand how they react. I can only imagine the pain that people go through with that type of a, of a situation. However, having said all of that, um, I always say that I never like to vote on something the first night it's brought up for a discussion, regardless of how minor or major it may be. Uh, and this is one of those situations, um, where we have not had a ti- a chance to, to discuss and to debate and to, you know, discuss with, uh, constituents about what it's all about. Nor do I think, you know, people always say, well, it's been posted. The people know that it's been posted. But I don't know if people necessarily, because it's, people don't hover over the board, the select board's, uh, agenda items. So I don't know if everybody who has heard, who wants to speak has spoken or who has different thoughts has spoken, whether or not that would change my opinion on it. I doubt it would, but I, I think that those people that might want to speak have the right to speak. Um, and I don't know if it's fair of us ever, and I say this frequently, I always dislike when something comes up for the first time to, uh, to vote on it that evening. But, um, you know, um, listening to what everybody else has to say as well.
But David, I'm curious though, because I think what Justine was referring to is, and what Chris was referring to was the value of this board voting, whether it be tonight or in, you know, another session versus going all the way to a town meeting.
Oh, I, I, I think we have the jurisdiction and the, and the authority to make that, to make that decision. And I think, you know, we might as well, we might as well take that role because we have the authority to do it. And, uh, so for that, I would certainly have no problem with the board being the one to make the decision. I just would prefer it to be after it's been, uh, you know, allowed for a greater audience to participate in the discussion. And when it's, like I say, any item that's posted the first night, unless it's something that has been, you know, written up in the paper a hundred times and, you know, everybody shows up for that meeting. And I don't remember the last time we had one of those. Uh, cause typically those, I guess are town meetings. Um, but I, you know, I would prefer to have a presentation one night and this is the way I like things to go. And I think that most deliberative bodies do it. Presentation one night and then a, a vote following, or there has been a series of debates or discussions prior to the vote being taken. And I don't think that's happened.
Yeah, I, I kind of, um, um, to, to David's point, initially I thought about the town vote and, and I think to David's point, this is something that we need to take a leadership on. And, um, tonight I, I have a feeling, I'm, I'm listening and I'm, I'm being educated. Obviously it was a very powerful presentation and moving presentation from those of you who are, are living, um, the experience. And it's something that we should definitely take to heart and, um, have the opportunity to, to have the discussion amongst us. Um, I think this is, um, you know, an opportunity for us to do lead by example. Um, initially, like I said, I thought about going to the town for vote, but I don't believe that's the way to go. Um, that's just give us an opportunity to discuss among ourselves and, um, make a decision. Um, and I think tonight was a very powerful presentation and, um, I you know, opened my eyes, let's put it that way. So it is important that we take it to heart and, and, um, have that deep conversation.
Okay. All right. So then what I'm hearing is that we'll put this on another agenda. Um, we'll, you know, we'll digest.
Lydia had his hand, her hands up, it looks like.
Natasha does too. Still does Betsy.
A bunch of people.
Yeah.
Okay, everybody wants to speak? Um, all right, uh, Natasha, I, or no, Lydia, I think you were first. No, no. I
Well, we don't know who you're pointing, I like that. We don't know who you're pointing to.
This is like Hollywood squares, Hollywood squares.
Yeah, the British bunch.
Everybody's on different, different positions on everybody's screen, I think.
Uh, thank you again. I'm sorry. I just wanted to hear in the conversation about your intention and your direction. Um, I would suggest that you maybe reach out to districts that have, um, passed this. I, I found when I, um, was doing that at the school level. Um, they, it was through the councils. It wasn't at the town board. It was their councils who did so framing him. Um, did so, and I actually inquired as far as what, what the community felt afterwards. And they actually said it was, although initially there was concern leading up to it once, um, it was passed, that it actually was very successful. Um, and, and so I would just, if you're looking to do homework, you know, consider, consider doing that, reaching out to the council's understanding that I found it helpful, uh, as well. I also just wanted to share my own personal story. Um, and just a matter of how, how much I think language matters and to some people more than others. You know, at a recent meeting, uh, for the select board, there was a conversation and, um, an official made a comment that was very light and in very passing about someone being, uh, fresh off the boat. And it was very, um, minor to most. Nobody probably picked up on it. But being of Latin heritage, I know that my family has had a lot of racism ex- experienced because of their, um, not being able to easily assimilate into their community. And so that comment was very derogatory that I've experienced in my family. Um, but clearly some people use it and it just doesn't have that same negative connotation. But it's a small, small point that language matters. And I really would just encourage our, our leaders to think about that. That it's not through your lens necessarily, but to the lens of people that it would be most impactful to. And you all have a chance and opportunity to do that. And is that, um, is there going to be resistance potentially? Is it going to make everyone happy? Probably not. There's no decision that any of us do that's going to check all those boxes. I think right now, considering what's going on in the world, I think doing, being on the right side of history, I think is the really the most important thing that I would like to see, um, that you all, you know, step in and, and take that direction. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Natasha. Uh, was there any one else?
That's, Betsy has her hand up.
Okay, sorry, I can't, and, and Lydia as well. So, okay, so Betsy first?
Um, yeah, so I just, I just want to say I've been listening to this whole thing. Um, I'm really disappointed that you guys are, it seems like you're not going to vote tonight. I think that you know, it's, it, you're punting this issue. Um, it really hurts a lot of people. Um, I have no Native American heritage at all, is nothing to do with me, but I see my friends, my neighbors hurting. And I, I, I just, and I also don't like, I don't know, remember who said it, but somebody said both sides. And that, that's e- extremely triggering for me and a lot of people, because I'll remember what former President Trump said about both sides in the, the Charlottesville incident where a woman was murdered. Um, and you know, if this is not something that is up for debate where, oh, we have to hear whatever everyone says, this, this is, this is about racism and discrimination. And, and it's got to stop. And I'm, I have to say from everything I've seen and heard lately online and, and other things with these meetings, I'm ashamed. I am ashamed to live in this town. And I, and, and it, and it really hurts. And I just want you to know that I just think it's extremely cowardly that you're not taking this vote tonight. And, and that's, that's all I'm going to say.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it. I, I understand your concern. I, I hear what you're saying. Um, I, you know, like David said, there, there are a lot of times where we do, we do, we're not punting an issue. We are taking the information and we're digesting it ourselves. And we will come back and vote on it. And it does sound like most of, most of the members do want to vote on, on just doing it ourselves as opposed to a town meeting. So this is something that, you know, it, it will, you know, it will be voted on. So it's, it's not that we don't take it seriously. We absolutely take it seriously. Um, but I'm sorry that you, that you felt that way tonight. Uh, Lydia?
Yeah, I just, the comment I have is, um, if you're going to be this, not you specifically, but if the board is going to be this careful about making this decision because it affects the entire community, I would ask that you, um, extend the same protocol for all of the issues because there have been some in the past that specifically affected, say, the school district or the community at large where not every stakeholder was brought into the conversation. And there wasn't a huge amount of outreach in making sure that everyone knew that an issue was either being discussed or being voted on. So if, if you're going to do that for this, you need to do it for all of the issues that you guys address.
And I, I'll address that specifically, Lydia. I speak to that quite frequently. And, um, you know, I'm just, tonight, my comment was just consistent with what I said frequently. I believe that that is true, that we uh, very often have things on the agenda that have I believe that that is true, that we very often have things on the agenda that have not been, that have not been, uh, you know, announced. And as I said a few minutes ago, people don't hover over the select board's agenda. And so if we speak about an item and we learn about an item, I am not one who believes that votes should be taken the same night that something is brought up for the first time. Unless it's really routine stuff, you know, like we had some stuff tonight that was, I mean, that, that I don't think is it at all necessary of, of a debate and, and whatever. But, uh, for the majority of the, of the material, I don't think that there's a need for a vote the same night that it's first discussed.
The, um, that's been, that's been consistent since I've been on the board that we haven't done votes on the first night of a presentation of something coming before us for almost universally, but, um, you know, we just haven't done it. And I don't, I, I think it's pretty clear when you, and, and as far as the leadership goes, I'm pretty sure that the five of us have suggested that we all believe that this is something that we support. It's just that, you know, we don't typically vote the first night and there are other, I don't know, there may be other people that have, you know, have, have, want to have a say in the, the discussion.
Lydia, would you mind sending specific instances that you're referring to, just so we can be on the same page about the, I think, I think it may be, you know, the kind of the weight of the issue uh, is the difference between what you're talking about and what David and Chris are. So I just kind of want to see that, but.
So, um, actually, if I can jump in there, Lydia, if you can send that to Greg and then he can just, he can distribute it to the board, that would be, that'd be helpful. Thank you. Um, okay, I have Ami again, and I have Becca, and then I probably am going to wrap it up, but go ahead of me.
So, um, I have first just a question for the board. I, I'd like to know whose voice you don't think you're hearing, just out of curiosity. Because right now what I'm seeing is an underrepresented group saying this is something we've been saying for years, for generations, since the 1970s, saying our voice has not been brought to the table. We have heard the voices of people who wanted to celebrate Columbus Day for years and years and years. Those are the voices that we've heard for a long, long time. And the voices of the native people are the ones that have been silenced. So I wonder whose voices you expect to come up and speak here? Who, whatever this other side may be. Right? Like that, that's the piece that, that I'm concerned about is, is the other side, this white majority that's been in charge and that has been colonizing for, for hundreds of years?
No, I think that, I think that honestly, uh, you know, I like to do research, so I like to re, I heard the voices tonight and absolutely. And I know that everybody, um, everybody has been very supportive and I don't, I don't dispute that. What I'd like to see the other towns that have done it, how they've gone about it. I'd like to, you know, I'd like to, I'd like to hear what that process was. I just like to do those types of things. So it, it has nothing to do with trying to put anyone off, trying to marginalize anyone any further than they have already felt. I am trying to do my due diligence just to make sure that, you know, I have my ducks in a row before I make the decision. And that's, and again, I'm one person, but that's my feeling about not voting on something the same day I, I see it as far as.
I want to make it clear that this is, I'm not insisting that you vote today. But what I'm responding to is what I'm hearing, right? Is, is if we are bringing other voices to the table whose voices are.
Right? And there might be a, a, a lot more voices that we, similar to what we heard tonight. That want to echo that.
And, and, and I agree that, that these voices are the, are important voices to be hearing. But I also just want to make sure that if we're giving voices weight, right, we need to take that sort of perspective is who haven't we heard from? Right? And who have we heard from? And, and then also, you know, I, I don't want to harp upon this particular issue, but I do have to say that that other side piece did sting for me as well. They, that, that both sides should be looked at equally. That's something that, that has been, that, that, that those both sides don't actually exist. We have people who are looking at the facts, who are telling you what, what actually happened. Right? And then we have people who may resist that change. But, but their resistance doesn't hold the same kind of weight as the weight of people who have been wronged for generations. Just the way that when, you know, we're talking about Charlottesville, the people who murdered people are not the ones whose voices we want to be listening to, right? Those are not the voices that we want to hear. We want to hear the voices of those who lift others up. We want to hear the voices of those who care about our communities, who want to make our communities better and stronger, who want to make our communities inclusive in a way that is real, that is not just asking people to be in the room, but asking them to be at the table, asking them to be part of the dance. Right? So here we are with this, this opportunity to do the right thing. So if you're not going to vote on it tonight, I would like to propose that you set a date for when you would like to vote on it. And I would hope that it's at the next meeting because I believe that you are in the right, that you are thinking about this in a wonderful and positive way. And I think that we should roll with that momentum to be able to say, okay, we've, we've listened to this, we've heard it, we think it's good. We're going to take a little bit of time just to sleep on it. But the next time we, we meet, we're going to meet and we are going to vote on this and, and we feel that this is the right thing to do.
I agree with that approach. I agree with that approach.
All right. Thank you, Ami. I, I need to, we need to move on a little bit. Becca, did you have something? Thought you're muted.
Okay, thank you. I, I'm also, um, fine with not voting tonight, but I do feel a little confused about the idea that people didn't know about this, that there wasn't enough information out there because it has really been something that's been planned for, for weeks now. And one of the voices that I did want to share that was part of that preparation is, um, my daughter, who's a Maynard High School student, wrote a letter that somehow didn't make it into the packet. But I feel like it's important to, to know that actually the people who care about this issue have been thinking about it and were prepared for this. And so if this is the presentation, I, I would like to, um, read her letter if that's okay.
There was a letter from a high school student in here, I thought.
Yeah, there were a couple of students who wrote letters. I'm not sure why my daughter, my daughter.
Okay, all right.
So it's.
Okay.
Another, a, a friend, a classmate, but.
Okay.
That's all right, because I, people did prepare for this. It is the presentation. I absolutely respect that you might want to vote on another day. But I do think the people who are interested and care about this issue are the ones who are showing up. And, um, so I agree that I don't, I, I'm a little confused by that, that idea. So, um, I would just like to read it to have the, you know, the students and young people's voices in this as well, from Maynard. Dear Select Board, my name is Lula Solomon-Roar, and I'm a freshman at Maynard High School. I've been a part of the Maynard School System since fourth grade, so I've lived in Maynard for my entire life. Throughout my Maynard experience, I've been struck by the measures this town continues to take in order to uphold social justice. Of course, the most prevalent case at the moment is that of Indigenous Peoples' Day. To be completely honest, the debates surrounding the change from Columbus Day to Indigenous Peoples' Day baffles me. It appears conclusive that celebrating a day named after Columbus is no longer, and for that matter, never has been a viable option. After docking in the Caribbean, Columbus began the enslavement and murder of millions of indigenous people across North America. For these horrific acts, Columbus can, deserves to be condemned. He was responsible for the death of nations, nations that were here before even one European foot stepped upon this land. As for me, it was a valuable experience to learn about Indigenous Peoples' Day in school for the first time this year. In the span of 45 minutes, I learned more about the indigenous side of the story than I ever had. My views were expanded for the better, and I proceeded to research the tribes that once inhabited the town of Maynard. The Nipmuck, Pawtucket, and Massachusetts tribes were the majority in what is now our town. By raising indigenous voices through Indigenous Peoples' Day, we can both denounce genocide and embrace a people whose challenges have been disregarded time and time again. We can celebrate indigenous culture and bring more diversity to our tight-knit community. I hope my hometown of Maynard can reflect the ideals that I grew up learning to appreciate and follow. Sincerely, Lula Solomon-Roar.
Thank you.
I think like, I remember, I think, it, thank your daughter for the letter. But I think to Armin's point that I, I had the benefit of hearing Maggie's presentation. I think it was, you know, like I said a few weeks ago. And then the two presentations tonight and to Armin's point, unfortunately for a lot of us, it's, um, very educational. It's, it's, uh, you know, it's a lot of new information. And I'm hopeful that there isn't, and, and, you know, the, it, I don't, I don't know that the term other side, I'm trying to suggest that there's another group of beliefs out there. But the, but the, you know, more, it's more of two, you know, a differing set of opinions. I'm hopeful that anybody that sees tonight's meeting and anybody that, um, is part of our next meeting and with, with the same information is shared and discussed, will come to the same conclusion and there won't be any discussion in the negative about this issue. Because like everybody that spoke tonight, it's absolutely the 100% right thing to do. But to, to vote tonight would, would just kind of be breaking in the tradition and the, the, the things that we've typically tried to do. Although to Lydia's point, very, very few issues, Lydia, do we vote on, on the first night. And I was, I, I wanted to ask too, Lydia, because I know that you guys went through the same discussion with the schools. How did, how did, how did that discussion go? And was there anybody that sat through the information? Because I think you guys probably got this, if not the same similar information, anybody that from town that kind of stayed on the, the wrong side of the facts, so to speak.
So, um, the, the idea of changing the district calendar was proposed to us by Maggie Day and Mara. And it was taken, the principals took it to the students at Maynard High School. And we decided we would let the students decide. And they unanimously, in the, the student government unanimously, um, voted to adopt Indigenous Peoples' Day, were proud to do it and, um, and really didn't see it as a, a question. It was just, it was something that they needed to do. And to Becca's point, um, I think it's really important that we listen to the kids' voices. We're going to be dead and gone, right? But we need to lay the groundwork for the future.
Don't make me feel so good.
Well, I'm, you know, it is what it is. So, um, so they, they have spoken, they have said that this is what they want. Most of them are not of voting age, right? So they don't get to elect the officials. They don't get to elect, you know, the people who would speak for them. But they have spoken and the school committee listened. And yes, we got some hate mail, but it was usually independently and sent to us personally, not, you know, to the school or to, you know, the district email. So again, I would like to say that I, I feel like the case has been made, the people have spoken, this has been discussed for over a year now. And, um, and on top of that, there isn't anyone here, there isn't one person here who's saying, you know, I got to say I disagree and I think you should take some more time. There's not one person here. If it meant that much to them, they would have showed up and they didn't. So.
Want to point out.
I do want to point out, Lydia, that it hasn't been discussed here for a year. In this, in this, in this setting right here, it's been discussed for 59 minutes.
Okay, I understand that.
You know, so that's, that's what I'm trying to get at. Okay? So, so we, we, we do have our way that we do run the meetings and that is, that is what we're doing.
That, and that's fine.
I want to point out though, that, you know, I think a lot of our policies and procedures that we have here are really for different sorts of issues. They're for materialistic issues like the fire station we're about to decide on. And when we try to fit non-materialistic issues like this into that set of policies and procedures, we, we think we're having an equal treatment for the issues, but that leads to different outcomes. And so I, I just want to acknowledge that there are differences between this issue and the issues that we commonly address and that we need to acknowledge that and, and consider that maybe the, the normal set of procedures we have don't fit to this particular application. And so I, I would feel comfortable voting on this tonight. I understand that the rest of my board would not necessarily. So I just wanted to, to, you know, say that just because we're treating it just like any other issue, that's not, you know, there, there can be exceptions to that. And we have, we as the board have the ability to change our own rules, so.
I understand. So I, I realize you're comfortable with that, Jeff. I've heard from David that he would be comfortable at a later meeting. Armand?
Yeah, I'm, I'm comfortable at later. I, I was prepared to vote tonight, but I think I'm more comfortable to, um, kind of discuss this and, and vote on our next meeting.
Okay, Chris?
I'm, I'm okay. I'm okay at the next meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, and I, I think Ami made the point that it should be a date specific. So if we know that it's the next meeting, it's the next meeting and that's, that, that is it. And we, you know, finalize everything between now and then. And I want to make one last point that, to people who might be watching on Facebook or whatever, there's that new book that came out from, that David Marks wrote for the sequin centennial, second time that came up tonight in this discussion. The Sequas Centennial Committee, uh, where the early chapters are about the early part of Maynard's history. And, you know, I, I, I've been involved in this community for quite many, several years. And the stories that he told, or the story that he told about the Nipmuck, uh, peoples in that, in the book, the one chapter on that was eye-opening to me. And to understand what, who lived here before us and who was here before us is important to our, you know, our history. And so I encourage people to grab that book and, uh, and read it so that, um, other people can become educated about what our history is all about from the very beginning of, uh, of, of really of, you know, known civilization here in, in, uh, in Maynard.
If, if we're going to, if we're going to do a date specific to, to Ami's point, could we, could we, let's do it now and set the date now and, and have it so that everybody here that has, um, you know, so much interest in this conversation has the date and time. You know, now and, and there's no, no one's, you know, everyone, everyone has the right opportunity to show up.
So I was, I was actually thinking the next meeting, I mean, we've, I, I think two weeks is plenty of time for, for us to digest and, and, you know, to, to vote on it at the next meeting, which would probably be April 2nd. Is that what I'm, is that, no, what day is that? April? I don't know.
Six, April 6th.
Okay, April 6th. Um, is that agreeable for my board members?
Yep.
I just wanted to ask, David, you mentioned get things finalized between now and then. Is there anything you specific you were referring to?
No.
Okay.
Just.
And I did want to point out in the, just, just on the comment you just made that in the presentation, it was noted that, you know, civilization existed before the events we're talking about here. So I just wanted to acknowledge that as well.
Fair point. And, you know, I, I'm just, my point was the.
I understand. I just, you know, and I think Kathleen called me out in the HRC meeting too, and I just appreciate that. So I want to pass that positive reinforcement along.
So I, I'm just, I'm just kind of thinking ahead. Is there a, um, I guess the question is to Greg and to Becky and Megan as well. How we get the information that we heard tonight to anybody interested in coming in on April 6th? So that we're not, you know, not going through the whole thing and we're not going to impose upon, um, the presenters to come back again to present the full thing. Is it, do, do you know, can we do that?
The table. All the materials that were presented tonight are online. And if anyone would like to submit, so those, those members who submitted a statement, and if there wasn't already included, we can take that and then we can, we can just say like, this was submitted at the board meeting. We can have it on board docs, just like every other public material. And then we can include a link to that in a notice that we can either put on the website. And if the board would like, we can, we can put a, I don't know, I, I don't want to speak too soon. But if we, if we, if we catch it within the deadline to submit to whatever the newspaper article or whatever, if you want to go as far as doing a newspaper posting, yes, there's a little bit of a cost to it and timing is kind of of the essence, uh, but we could go that. Yes, there's a little bit of a cost to it and timing is kind of of the essence, but we could go that far. Otherwise, we could do it on the website, we could do it.
Yeah, if you put, if you post it on the, the website, on the Facebook page, on the, the Twitter page, we can do our part. To spread the word, put it on to, you know, the, the popular townwide Facebook pages. And, you know, we all know which ones are, you know, most widely read. And put it on that and make it known that this is being, this, this topic is going to be voted on and discussed that evening.
I also think that it would be helpful to direct people, obviously to, you know, we do have this on Facebook Live right now, so this will be recorded. Available on Facebook, we do have the WAVM link. So they can review it, starting at, I think I looked up, I think it was 7:40 when, when the, the talk began. So if people don't want to listen to the, all of the other business of the town, they can start listening at around the, you know, around the 40 minute mark of the meeting. And they can hear all the dialogue. All right. So, yeah, so we'll say April 6th. All right.
And again, before we go, I just want to, I just want to say thank you to the, you know, to, I don't want to butcher anybody's names. I just want to thank you ladies for your, for your time and the presentations and the, and the education this evening, it's much appreciated.
Absolutely, thank you very much for presenting and thank you for, thank you to Ms. Day for, for bringing it forward. Thank you to Mara for your continued support and, and advocacy here. And thank you to everyone who spoke tonight, we really appreciate everybody who, who came out tonight.
Keep on enlightening us.
All right. Okay, so we will move on to. My computer froze, sorry. We're moving on to the general contractor notice of award. And I believe, is there a motion there?
Yes.
I, my computer completely froze, so I can't see anything.
Oh, no.
Oh, there it is, okay, go ahead, Chris.
All right, move to approve the contract with LD Russo Incorporated for the general contracting services. For the construction of a new fire station in the amount of 10,000 or 10 million, sorry. 10 million, 383,885 dollars in authorizing the use of digital signatures if approved.
Yeah, that would have been really underbid.
That was wishful thinking, I guess.
Yeah.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jeff, all right. So Greg, do you want to speak to this?
Just briefly, just as maybe as an introduction and for a little context. So for anyone on the call who didn't know, we approved a day exclusion to build a firehouse. And, and that, it's been a long time coming. And so we're moving now that, once that vote was made, you know, and I'm going to introduce her, Alicia Monks is our owner's project manager. She's really been pressing the pedal to get us into procurement phase, which included, which is kind of where we're at right now, which included. Sub bids and then general contractor bids. And as the results of the general contract bids are, are shared below. And then the general contractor will select from the selected and qualified subcontractors to be able to form the project team that will construct the fire station. So, well, we also met recently with the Fire Station Building Committee, so that we can kind of review with them where we are with the project. But LD Russo, as you can see from the bid results, was the lowest bidder. And it's not just because they're the lowest bidder, of course, like they, they were pre-qualified, they met all the criteria of the, of the submission. And I think they have, I think they're a strong, I think they're a strong bid either way, because you can see some of the work that they've done. We had a initial meeting with them on Friday. And I'm confident this, and I'm, I'm very confident in this recommendation for the board to approve this. Now, this, this contract price is, it's both the, the bid, I mean, the, the full bid contract price. But it also includes two add alternates, which Alicia can speak to. But this is for the full amount of the, of the general contract with those two add alternates. And it's still below our budget. So for the moment, but you never know, when you start building, we'll, we'll keep the board informed, but we'll go through the Fire Station Building Committee. But it's still pretty exciting news. So Alicia, do you want to add to that?
Sure, the add alternates, generally add alternates are kind of like icing on the cake. And we try to make sure that the base bid is absolutely what they need. And the add alternates would be things that would be nice to have, because you never know how bids will come in. So it would be, it doesn't, it isn't critic, mission critical to the station, but they would be nice to have. And in our case, because the bids became, came in low, we're recommending that they accept, that the town accept the add alternates. The first add alternate was to include, to put radiant heat in the slabs of the apparatus bay. What, what that will do is add life to the, to the truck, to the fire trucks. So that they, they stay heated and they, and all the apparatus base have drains in them. And it will help dry out the underside of the trucks, which will make them last longer. It is that it, when you're building it, if you know about it and you just put it in, it's not that expensive. But it is certainly something that will definitely pay back in the longevity of your considerable investment in fire trucks. The second item was to have a metal roof versus an asphalt roof on, on part of the station, on the tower of the station. And a part of that was aesthetic, but it's also a metal roof will last longer, costs a little bit more, but it will last longer. It will serve the town longer than an asphalt roof, which has a shorter life. So.
Okay. Thank you, does anyone have any questions for either Alicia or Greg, or I see Chief Stowers is on the meeting also?
He's, he's in two, two boxes.
Just a question, just one question about the general intent as we proceed with this project. What's the? What's our understanding of how often we'll get a little update as to what's going on? You know, I, I don't think we need, oh, you know, blow by, blow by, blow description of how things are going. But I don't know if it's quarterly, is that the intent? Is it intended to be, you know, to the board I'm talking about? Is it intended to be monthly, is it intended to be every meeting, you know, what's the?
How often would you like it? I mean, like, that, you know.
That's sort of my, that's sort of a question, that's, that's the question.
The building committee will be meeting once a month. And I could tell you that Greg and Armand are part of the building committee. So I think I would, I would leave it to them as your liaisons between.
Yeah, that's okay, all right, that, that works.
To keep you informed, and I think it's going to be sort of on their judgment that if it's something to update, or they can just say, things are swimming great, there's nothing to update. I mean, it's.
Right, in particular, if there has to be like a change order. So if there's a change order, I'm going to inform the board. Or if there's like a, and, or certainly if there's a significant delay to the project, I'm not, I wish I hadn't said that already. But, but if there is, if there is anything that, you know, I like, I like to kind of lean on, on telling the board whenever I can. And then TA reports, you know, I love those. So, but, but it is exciting either way. And so having the Fire Station Building Committee is kind of like the first step, like we inform them. And then, and then they kind of give us direction. But I'll keep the board informed. Besides, it's down the street from Town Hall, so if you guys are curious how it's going, swing on by.
Yeah, so I think that, but I think it would be helpful after, you know, obviously there's one meeting, one of our meetings probably. You know, happens after the Fire Station Building Committee meeting, so maybe like date.
Sure.
After those meetings.
I, I will also be doing a written monthly report, which I will, I'll turn in my homework in the first week or so of every month to Greg and he can distribute that as he sees.
That'll probably be, that'll probably be sufficient. Because I, like to Greg's point, you know, I, I would not expect, and I don't know what the rest of the board thinks, but I would not expect to hear about every change order that comes through. I mean, I remember sitting on the school board, on the school building committee, and there were a lot of change orders that, that came through. And some of them were, you know, mundane stuff, it's not, you know. So I don't want to hear, I don't want to hear about every change order. You know, I hear that, you know, they're going to use a blacks, a black screw instead of a purple screw, because it, you know, it looks better against the wall that they're going to have there, you know.
Yeah. That's true.
Okay.
So, Madam Chair also, no, nevermind, I'll save, I'll save my comment, take it back.
Are you sure?
Yep.
Okay, all right. Does anyone else have any other questions regarding the contract, regarding? Any part of this for either Alicia or Chief or Greg? All right. Then all those in favor to approve, Jeff?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes, please.
I am a yes. All right, so thank you, thank you very much, Alicia.
I do want to, actually, now that we're on, now, now I do want to say, because I didn't want to spoil the vote. But now that you have agreed to the contract, which we will process, and LD Russo is very excited and it's, it's all great. The Fire Station Building Committee, we did discuss when a, when a. Out ribbon cutting, what's the other thing? Groundbreaking. And so we threw out there the date, April, Friday, April 9th, in the afternoon, 1:30 is the, I, I came up with that. So if, 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 I think it, it could fit and, and the owner of LD Russo seemed amenable to that. They're, they're not going to be, they may not be clearing by that point, they may not be actually doing work on the site. But he said he could, he could try to show up and support that. So I just wanted to make that publicly known.
Great, sounds good.
Sign out there?
There's no sign yet, we, we're.
There will be.
Yeah.
Didn't we discuss that at one point, putting a sign on that site?
There will be, there will be.
I keep driving by, but I don't want to run anyone over, so I don't look too, I don't look too hard.
No, there's no sign right now. Yeah.
Okay.
All right. Okay, sounds good.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Alicia.
True.
Yeah, so for some reason, my computer keeps falling asleep. Making, so item number 11, making the connections micro transit program. I will entertain a motion. If there is one.
I'll move to approve the intermunicipal agreement between the towns of Sudbury, Acton, Bolton, Carlisle, Concord, Lincoln, Maynard, Stowe and Westford. For the making the connections program as provided and authorize the use of digital signatures if approved.
Second.
All right, thank you, Chris. Greg?
So myself and Amy Lovelace, the Council on Asian Director, who.
I do see her on.
There she is. Oh, very good, so, but she and I have been, have been in talks with this regional group, or you could, you know, you saw the list of names. And Sudbury is the kind of the host community for this intermunicipal agreement. And it's, so it's through the Community Compact Grant Program, so it's no cost to the town. But the, the general concept is, and this was again initiated by Sudbury, is to try to do that, that micro transit, which is that last connection for, for those individuals. That are not serviced by public transit any other way. So you can think of like Uber lifts or whatnot, that, that are kind of like that last localized sort of transportation. So it's not public transportation, but it was identified that a lot of, particularly the senior population are just underserved. Like they just don't have the transportation otherwise. And so Sudbury reached out to the surrounding towns, Amy and I have been trying to keep abreast of this. I, I have confidence in recommending that the board approve this intermunicipal agreement. This is a pretty standard, whenever there is a regional effort, there's usually terms for that and conditions. And so I don't think there's anything to flag in this IMA, it's relatively standard language. It just means that we are on board for this program. But I would, so I don't, Amy, do you want to give your two cents? What, what do you think?
I think that this, this offer, this is a great opportunity. I think transportation is a huge, by and large, unmet need. This, this opportunity to join with these, with Sudbury is the lead town, to join with this effort is to fill in those gaps. And I guess every town and every municipality has particular gaps in terms of their transportation services. So this, this, this is going to be a great pilot for me. I particularly think that the seniors in Maynard can absolutely benefit from some aspects of what this pilot might offer. I, I really am keen on evening and weekend transportation. So in addition to everything else that's going to be explored, and that's always been something in the back of my mind with all the great opportunities. Maynard offers in the evenings and, and weekends, so, but it's applies to not just social and recreational, but there are gaps in terms of. Getting people to particular medical appointments, unemployment, I mean, employment. And this is not just focused on seniors, it's focused on people with disabilities, veterans, those that are financially vulnerable. These particular populations who have a great unmet need in terms of their transportation needs. I'm very excited about working with these partners and, and working with Sudbury as the, as the lead on this project.
Amy, can you speak a little bit to the, what it looks like for the end user? How, how simple it will be to, to take advantage of this program once it's in place?
I do not know, I do not know right at this moment, I do not know it's how it's going to be specifically set up. It's, it can be anything from Uber to taxi to a livery service. But it's going to be able, you know, it's, will be set up in a way that's going to make it very user friendly. I'm not sure the specifics yet. But as things progress, certainly would be keen on giving you updates as it sort of, you know, unfolds.
And so who, who will be working on those details as we progress?
Go ahead, Greg.
No, I'm sorry, I, sorry, Amy, go ahead, you know the answer, you talk.
Yeah, well, it's, it's the collective, there'll be a steering committee with representatives from the towns that are part of this agreement. And the steering committee, in addition to the, you know, the grant itself, which generated this. That's where things will sort of flesh out and develop.
And you see how there's, so they'll have to be project manager and then there'll be marketing materials. Actually, that kind of reminds me of similar to some of the eRap, like the Emergency Rental Assistance Board. Like, so basically you have to hire somebody to manage it amongst all the towns, and that's the approach.
And we are, are we certain that there will be for mobile impaired seniors or sight impaired seniors? That need assistance in that, to that degree? That this will be available to them in a manner that is safe for them?
That is, David, that's right here, it's embedded in the, in the report as far as the priorities with those with disabilities, with mobility, people that no longer drive. That's a big part of, I guess, a subset of the transportation.
Great.
Being an unmet need, so absolutely, that's, that's a focus.
Yep, great, thank you.
Or for Greg, it seems like we're engaging in more of these kind of intermunicipal agreements, am I wrong in saying that?
I mean, I, I think it's a sign of the times. So the, the, to a degree, although this particular initiative, I, I think Amy and I have been talking about this for a long time. I think that, that the particular advocate out of Sudbury, I think has been, I think for two years, she brought this up at the Crosstown Connect. Meeting two years ago or so, anyways, so that's, maybe that's coincidental. But if you might refer into some of the other initiatives, which is regional support, I think, I think some of the surrounding towns have recognized that we just have a stronger voice if we work together. And, and because Sudbury may have a little bit more remind us, but they have limited resources. So this, that's the same example of all this kind of pooling those resources and getting that buy-in. This is also a grant, so in general, we, that's a, that's a pretty, it's a pretty successful approach if you apply in partnership. We do that pretty often, you know, or MAPC also, if, if we're going through another entity like an MAPC, so they're regional planning, then they're probably going to get the bang of their buck. They're going to have cooperations and collaborations between, between regional entities. So I think it's good, I mean, I, I, I'm a big fan of regionalization, we can't do everything for everybody. So we, we were almost forced to collaborate from time to time. But it's still good.
Absolutely.
Greg, you don't need the answer, I don't need the, I don't need the answer now, but how many of the compacts are we in part of these days, do you know? How many, how many?
No, good question. Just the one, I think, this one, this one would be one. And so that we as a town have, have done, like we've done our own community compacts a number of rounds. In fact, like remember the Lieutenant Governor came, because we're so, like, we love them and they, and they like us taking advantage of them. We just did the forecasting and, and we just, so I think this is only the one active right now, this would be, this.
So has the transportation one ended? The first one we signed, which was actually the first one in the state?
Oh, to, to get the community compact?
Right.
All right, so to get Crosstown Connect?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that wasn't a community compact, because that started in the Patrick administration. So that was, that was a community innovation challenge grant, but same office. So they, they just, different, different administration.
Official, but the difference, just a different name.
Yeah, so no, that, so that hasn't ended, because Crosstown Connect is still going. But the, the, the idea is to have it be a startup, and so the, the, and so I, I, I don't think, don't call me on this. But the, the idea is to have it be a startup, and so the, the, and so I, I, I don't think, don't call me on this. I think the concept was not to be reliant on the, in this case, community compact anymore for that Crosstown Connect program.
I mean, it's, it's, I was just curious if there was a number, but I have to say that, you know, from, from a perspective of someone that's lived here for, you know, 30 plus years in this town, that it's nice to see Maynard start to be included in these conversations and be a part of some of these, you know, these larger, larger discussions.
Oh, good.
A very long time. I don't, were, I don't know, David, David has a few years of me on the board, but I think for a long time, we weren't really part of those discussions. But now we're, you know, we're, we're seeing them constantly new and, and over and over again. So it's
Yeah, I think there was a, there was a, prior administrations didn't like necessarily to, to intermingle with our neighbors. And I think that might have been a reflection of even the community in many ways didn't like to intermingle. Thus, you know, we lost out many years ago, Amy, on opportunity for, to perhaps, you know, get together with Stowe on a, on a senior center, but because Maynard seniors wanted Maynard's senior center. And, you know, despite the fact that grandchildren play soccer together and go to baseball together and play, you know, every sport, and they're sitting next to one another on the field every weekend. It was, no, we want Maynard. And so I think that, I think that's changing a little bit, because I think people have recognized that without the cooperation of a regional solution, we're going to be left behind.
Great.
Sorry, go ahead, Jeff.
No, I was saying, great.
He just said, great.
I just said, great.
The Last Mile Program is the, the Last Mile problem is, is just one that needs to be solved. And so any, anything we can do to chip away at that and make it easier for people to get where they're going.
I remember talking in, there was something that Bill Nemser hosted with MAPC regarding different regional issues. Probably the first year I was on the board. And I remember talking to representatives from Carlisle, and they were saying that it was just ridiculous trying to find anything for them up there, because it's not like they have taxis, it's not like they have easy access to anything. So, so it's really, it is impressive that everyone's kind of banding together to try to make all of this work.
And as Amy said, transportation is huge, especially with our growing aging community that needs to get to various locations. And we can, we can make it work. And as you know, as you all know, Representative Hogan is really pushing regional transportation as a, as an initiative. And hopefully, it can, this can be another, another, you know, cog in the, in the, in the works.
Alright. Anyone else have anything? Any questions for Greg? Or Amy? Alright. Then all in favor, Jeff?
Yes.
David?
Yeah, yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Arment?
Yes.
I am a yes. Alright, very good. We'll move on to the annual town meeting 2021. Greg?
So that I there's kind of a flow to this. So the first thing is to talk about the budget. And then with that, you know, I like storytelling when it comes to the budget. So, where I left the story off for the board was that we had gotten our health insurance premium increase report from Maya, and, and we had properly over budgeted to a degree. We had budgeted for a 5% in my budget recommendation to the board, and then Maya came back with a 2.3%. So, if I like to be conservative, and so my recommendation is to go up to a 3% health insurance increase, health insurance premium increase for FY '22. But that does allow us some, and I, I just put it as excess, but think of it as you will, that there's a difference between 5% and then 3%. And that comes to about $107,000. So, what to do with that money? I have a recommendation for that. So you'll see in the two documents that I, I uploaded into Board Docs, one shows revision eight. The, the number of the revisions doesn't really matter. It's, it's more like the sequence of where we are in the, in the evolution of the budget. So, this is again for FY '22, for those of you following along at home. But revision eight was, was where we were, more or less with FY, with the, the January budget recommendation. But then revision nine takes that $107,000 and distributes it. So I, I, I was, I, I basically went ahead and incorporated what I'm about to describe to you, which is my budget recommendations of what to do with that $107,000. But I just want to say that, that they, those two documents are complementary. So, with that $107,000, and this is what I proposed to the Budget Subcommittee meeting last week, was to split it 60-40. So that 60-40 split is, is a typical split when it comes to either a certain cost or certain, in this case, budget, you know, usage between the town departments and the school department. Because that generally reflects the size of, of the two, the two kind of halves, if you will, of, of the municipal government. So, that, that 60-40 split, being that it's $107,000, I, I broke it down, and I'll just say it aloud now for the, for the community. So, a number of expenses have kind of evolved, or are kind of like, came, came to light since January 21st, as well as identifying some of those expenses that, that I wasn't able to recommend the board budget for. And so here's the list. $1,000 towards mosquito control. So, Megan Samuto can speak more to that if you have questions about that, but she's, she's been helping administer that for the town. And, and we just, she got notified that the, that the cost went up. So we need to, need a budget for that. Professional development for the treasurer collector's office, so I do have a new treasurer collector, and she wasn't able to submit a budget by the time. We'd already submitted it to the board, but she's requesting for a training budget for herself and her staff. I'm recommending $7,000. Professional development that would go towards HR and Town Administrator's Office, $3,000, which doesn't sound like much, but we, we don't have a training budget for, for the town. And, and right now, we're, we're engaged through a My- My- Mya Wellness Grant, which is very fortunate that we're able to take advantage of this opportunity. But that grant, I think, is over $20,000. And that's, that's for a handful of managers to get management training. So $3,000, so it wouldn't go very far, but it's, it's more of a budget than we've had. Facilities for $14,000, so that's, that was referenced with the Civico item earlier. There is a cost if, if the town is going to not not sign over the Coolers School for another year, and that's about $14,000 for the cost of maintenance and upkeep of the, of the Coolers School. MS4, which is stormwater management. So we, we do have a budget for that already, but it's not enough. And as Justin will talk to you, the demands of MS4 are increasing and urgent. So, we have an obligation to monitor and to control our stormwater runoff, and particularly as it goes into the river, and we are regulated by the state on that. So we have, like, we, we have to keep up with that, and we have not been meeting our budget criteria for it. So this would be $10,000 to supplement that. And then tree and right-of-way maintenance. So we, we, we don't budget for it. So every year, we are reliant on budget transfers, and, and the, in the hopes that we are conservative enough in our other budget items that we are able to use to budget for trees and right-of-way maintenance and whatnot that comes along. And inevitably, they do come along. There's a lot of trees and a lot of work to be done. And so, there's a cost of that, but we have not been budgeting properly for it. So I'm, I'm asking for a minimal amount of $8,000, which is, could, could really help. And I don't be surprised if next year, Justin submits a budget request, as he already did for these items, and it's even more, because we're just trying to be responsive to the, to the community in those, in those items. So that's, that's my proposal. And then the so I, so I propose this to the Budget Subcommittee. They had questions about it. I answered those questions. A lot of it was, was about Coolers School, you know, just they could have an understanding of what the Coolers School demands are. I, and obviously, David or Jeff can kind of speak to this as well. But I would say that it was relatively well-received. Like, I, I like to go to the Budget Subcommittee and look for guidance and like direction that would help me inform you, the board, just as they and their members can take it back to their representative bodies. But I feel confident in this, in this, in this recommendation. I did inform the Superintendent's Office, Brian Haas, the Superintendent of this, and he was welcome to, to get other $60,000 to their budget. And now, and I, of course, we know this does not meet the school committee's requests for their budget. But it's a, is a step in the right direction.
Yeah, Greg, I'll just add, relative to our meeting, whenever it was last Tuesday, that the I very much appreciate the receptiveness of the school committee members to the proposed, you know, changes that you've, that you've made here. I also wanted to emphasize, not only to them at the time, but also now to this board and publicly, that this is not recurring funds. So they can't, it can't be something, whatever money is transferred over to the schools or even to the town, cannot be guaranteed for next year. So we really can't build an operational budget off of it, because we're not guaranteed that health insurance next year is going to go down at all, let alone by the same percentage. So this is really just money to use to sort of fill some holes that we currently have in the, the current proposed budget. But again, I really appreciated the conversation we had at the Budget Subcommittee that I thought was, was, you know, was very professional and accepting of what we've got. And I see Lydia has a question, so I'll, she, I'll yield the floor.
Thank you, David. I just wanted to say that we were thrilled to get the extra money, and we're really grateful for it. And Brian was really pleased. And he said that this is, this is, you know, it, it's not everything that we need, but it's, it's much better than what we were hoping for. So, we're, thank you very much.
Was the most pleasant and amicable budget Subcommittee meeting I've ever been to.
Now, now, now.
Oh.
Goodness.
I didn't know you felt like that, Jeff. I thought they were all pretty nice.
It was very good, actually. I just wanted to say, I thought it was really great. I was, you know, participating in the conversations. Actually, they were, they were ultimately, and I just want to inject this here, because I, I said it there, but I think there's a better audience here. We're all together, we're all manner. We all care about the priorities of our town. And, and hearing, you know, Greg's thoughtful recommendation and how he went through it was really helpful. I mean, obviously, we all have our own vision of where certain priorities lie, but we're, we're in this together. We're working through the challenges to support Maynard's families, students, all of our community members. And so the best way we can do that is recognizing the broader needs. And I thought it was just a really great conversation, and I respect the, the discussion and the recommendation as well as it was presented. So, thanks again.
Natasha captured what I was trying to say, but much
But, but you just said Gavin.
Just saying ditto. Just saying ditto.
I, so I, just kind of touching back onto what David said, this is really sort of an estimate we had of the health insurance that we were able to, you know. So it's, it's kind of, I don't know if it's, it's, if I fully agree with what he said, David, but you're, you're right. It's, it's the inherentness, the, the inherent unpredictability of that prediction, that means it can't be turned into an operational line item. And so I wonder, Greg, if we ever think about doing, not only for this, but other line items, and I feel like I've seen them at the FinCon before, five-year sort of forecasting down to that kind of level of detail, or if that's something that we've considered.
So we have considered it. Have we done a great job at the town level? No. So, I, I know that, you know, as we're all well, where, I think you're referencing is Bob McCarthy, Julian Pendigrass, like, they're, 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 they're taking it. And it's great. Like, I'm, I'm, I'm actually really thrilled that they do that work. Anyways, it's on my long list that, that you saw, poor Lori got, that we need to be better about forecasting. And I was grateful that we used the community compact to that end. Like, we have a forecasting model that, that took, that's more than just a model, like, like, you know, the, we were able to have an expert that really dived into as much as he could with the data that he was provided. And so Lori has a tool to fill. And, and then, but health insurance, and I think this is something David is, is getting at too, is, that is such a weird beast. Like, it's, it's unlike most of our other art items. One, it's massive. So, so, which is, makes it, it's, not only is it kind of unwieldy and, and uncertain, but the fact that it's such a large budget is, is, that makes it even that much harder. So, now we had, we had a pretty good you know, year, like renewal year, right? Because our claims are relatively low. So that's good. But we don't know what it's going to be. So next year, our claims could go up. It could be, claims could go up either naturally, just because people get sick or injured. But it could also be because people start going back to the doctor's office. I know I've said this publicly before, but I just reemphasized the point that, like, I, I, but I'm still, so I'm glad that, that the board seems receptive to this approach of, of not going all the way down to the 2.3%, which is what Maya says we're obligated to pay. But, but I do want to keep that 3%, just because it's not a huge amount of cushion, but it's, it's still better.
I'm, I'm not attacking the 3% whatsoever. And so I, but I think that's why the, the five-year kind of outlay, two reasons. One, it handles some of the unpredictability of the ups and downs for one year, if you have that kind of five-year trend. And then the other, and recognizing that we have a new town accountant and a new financial staff, that once you have that model in place, it's much easier to maintain it one year at a time than it is to let five years go by and then have to start over from scratch. So I just
Yeah.
want to make sure we don't drop it.
I agree.
Greg, what, what part does NFP have in sending the five, the, the initial, the initial the initial increase? Is that something that they, they're part of?
Yes. Yeah, so what, and for the, for the public, Chris is, is referencing NFU, which is our health insurance consultant. So not, not our health insurance provider, that's Maya. And then, and actually, our health insurance, Spool Cross Per Shield. And then, but Maya is our, is our, kind of like our broker for that. And then NFP is, is our consultant. So they, they say, looking at the trends, looking at the rest of the market and their own other clients, because they have, they have a relatively large client base, they say, alright, Maynard, based on your claims, and here's what we think's going to happen, we think you should, we should budget for whatever, 9%. So, and they're usually pretty accurate according to what, how the numbers are going to come in eventually by Maya. Now Maya will tell us similar things, but they're not going to get it, and they're not going to make the same sort of assumptions. Like, they just don't want, they don't want the liability of, of misleading or telling us wrong. So, NFP really kind of fills in the gap for that.
I guess the, the question, the question is, you know, is, the concern would be that they don't make the same mistake in the opposite direction next year, or another, or another year, you know what I'm saying? Like, it's in our favor this year.
Yeah, you're right.
You know, the forecasting, I, I don't know if, I don't, I mean, I, you know, I deal with the health insurance that I do with, you know, my companies all the time, but
Yeah.
I, I know what you're saying, but it's I'm just wondering how we safeguard ourselves against the forecast going the opposite direction.
Yeah, so the one way to do it is by not going all the way down to the 2.3%. So like, I guess the best, if, if you really, if the board felt, and I, I'm it would be understandable if the board decided to keep a 5%, so, which is what the original budget was for. Because to your point, Chris, like, we, you don't, you kind of, you want to have a good problem, which is an over budget. Now the, but I, I, based on NFU, they were, they said this was a good choice for this year. But, but I think to the points earlier made, like, we should not be surprised if it's higher than that, because that just might be how the, how the market goes.
We, we want to have an accurate budget, right? We want to nail it right on the I think there's, Chris is trying to say, and is there's an asymmetric risk. We'd rather be slightly over than slightly under, if we have to err in one direction. So there's, there's good reasoning to have that set up there.
Yeah.
Alright. Anyone else have any other comments? Questions for Greg regarding the budget so far, or the plan for the money being used? Alright.
So I will want to, Madam Chair, if I could add, so what you see in that budget model as revision nine is, is the distribution of that $107,000. And then, according to those, according to those My Budget, Budget Recommendations. And then, that is then reflected in the draft articles, which you'll get to in a minute. So if there's questions as to, like, where that, like, what the board's action is for that, that's where it is.
Oh, no, that's, that's perfectly fine. I think I, yeah. So it was more that, you know, we can discuss it now, but we'll, we'll vote on approving it in two minutes.
Yeah.
Alright, so does anyone, does anyone have any concerns, questions regarding that revision nine, or the use of the monies, the allocation that, that Greg has suggested and proposed? Alright. So then we will move on to the draft articles. And there are, again, several motions. Who wants to read them?
I can do it if you would like.
That would be fantastic, sir.
Draft Control H, Community Preservation Draft Control H, Community Preservation Reserve Fund Appropriation. Finance Committee for Review and Comments. Move to accept Draft Control I, Community Preservation Fund Budget Fiscal Year 2022. As shown, move forward to Finance Committee for Review and Comments. Move to accept Draft Control KK, Community Preservation Fund Closeout. Undesignated Fund Balance as shown, move forward to the Finance Committee for Review and Comments. Move to accept Draft Control II, Fiscal Year 2022. Salary Administration Plan as shown, move forward to Finance Committee for Review and Comments. Draft Control JJ, amend zoning bylaws, Section 10.3.1. Establishment as shown, approved by Planning Board, forward to Finance Committee for Review and Comments. Move to accept and approve Draft Control K, Certified Free Cash Appropriation as shown. Move forward to Finance Committee for Review and Comments. Move to accept and approve Draft Control MM. Revolving Fund for Electric Vehicle Charging Stations per MGL Chapter 44, Section 53E. One, one slash two, as shown, move forward to Finance Committee for Review and Comments. Move Draft Control O, amend zoning bylaws, Section 9.1, as approved by Planning Board. Move forward to the Finance Committee for Review and Comments. Move to accept Draft Control, should be there, Greg.
What?
What's that?
Mine is blank, the last one. Move to accept and approve Draft Control Blank, is a blank there, General Fund Appropriate.
Draft Control D.
D? I must have printed it before you updated, so.
Maybe.
Move to accept Draft Control D, General Fund Appropriation as shown, move forward to Finance Committee for Review and Comments.
Do I have a second? All right. Thank you, Jeff. All right. Do any, so several different items of business here. And one of the things that, that I will point out is that, so the, the planning board did have their public hearing regarding the marijuana article to, you know, to consider the retail, marijuana retail and industrial zoning. And they did vote not to recommend that. So that is not something that we're going to be moving forward with at town meeting. I was told there was a robust conversation about it. But when, the, the few things that I've heard is that when it came down to it, they felt that they real, that they had done a lot of due diligence when determining the zoning, when they originally decided where retail marijuana was going to go. And there was some also concerns of how close industrial zoning was to residential zoning. So that was, I believe that those are the two comments that I heard from, from, that had happened at the, at the planning board. But yes, so that one will not be going forward for this town meeting at least. And does anyone have any questions or comments about any of the draft controls that we have to approve tonight?
I got one quick question, Greg, if you know, and if not, you can just look it up, you know, get the answer to me later on. But for the community, community preservation funds, is there any statutory limit as to how much they can build up those funds at any one given time? In other words, are they required to spend it down?
Yeah.
Or are they allowed to build it up? For example, if, if they wanted to plan for, and it's just, there's no, I'm just making this as an example. Say they said, oh, let's build a turf football field. Right. So therefore, let's not spend anything out of, you know, and then they determined that alumni field is a historical spot. It probably is not, but let's assume it is. So let's build it up until we get to $3 million and then spend it down at that time for a turf football field. Is, are they permitted to build up or are they required to keep it at a certain level?
It's a good question. I'm not familiar with any requirements, but I will have to double check. I would assume that there's not, because I don't know how the state legislature could, could regulate. Towns are different, at different scales. So the cost, the cost of one item, in this case, as your example, a football field or whatever, is, is cost differently in Arlington than it does in North Adams. So if, so they, or, or for purposes of purchasing conservation land or, or affordable housing, when not, those have varied costs. So I don't know if the state would impose even a percentage of how much could be allocated to, to. And I think it's up to the voters, probably, that if the voters feel like, hey, we're, we're contributing this surcharge to the CPC, but you know, we'll do anything with it. I think, I think the voters might have some.
However, theoretically, if we were to be able to tell the, the residents, yes, we have a long-term plan. And we talk about the plan. We have a long-term plan that we are going to be using CPC funds in five years to supplement a purchase of a fire station, whatever it may be. And then, then we will get that and it will not cost additional revenue to the taxpayer at that time. There won't be any need for an override. There won't be any need for a debt exclusion. There won't be any need for, you know, the point being, if, if we work with, if we have a plan that foresees a project that could use
Yeah, that's right.
CPC, we should get in their ear and, and try to get them to support the fact that here's a long-term plan that could, we build up the funds with an intentional use down the road that then won't make an impact on the residents at all.
No, I agree.
Been collected. You follow what I'm saying?
A hundred percent, because that, I've seen that, that is, that is the expectation, I believe. So like, yeah. Yeah. And so I don't, in, in Maynard in particular, you know, that's the CPC, whatever there, or, you know, actually, they would, they, I, I assume they receive requests, whether it be from Affordable Housing Trust, Conservation Commission, whatever, whatever that, that efficacy group is to say like, hey, we're thinking about buying whatever. And so, but we're going to need $3 million for it. Can you start saving now? And then that's, that's pretty standard. But I'll, I'll, it's a quick check. I'll just check for, if there's any, to your question, if there's any.
You know, because I don't know if we've had that discussion with them, you know, to have them say, hey, how do you, how come we work with you to fit it into our long-term capital plan?
Yep.
Well, I think this is, this is one of the reasons why we want to have different committees come to us on some sort of frequency. So we can have exactly that sort of conversation and, and still tie it into other committees that they might not be interacting with of the master plan. So I think, I think that's just another kind of data point that says, if, if, let's say, six months ago, we had met with the CPC in one of those kind of sessions, you would have been able to ask that question right there. You'd already kind of have your answer and maybe you want to do a checkup. Is that kind of, you know, it's, but it's another, you know, I, I don't know off the top of my head how far in advance CPC is planning, and I would love to, to know that.
But typically, they do year-by-year projects. They don't spend it all down. They build up as we see by this article. They, they, and this year was a little unusual anyway, because people weren't doing those types of projects and whatever. But the, you know, you think it through and there could be on an any number of levels, you could build up one fund for, you know, affordable housing and then utilize it to really, you know, build a house, you know, that type of thing.
And I think, I think that's another, again, right? So when we have those meetings, it's recognizing those kind of cross connections. So if it, you know, with right now in that particular one, you know, you're obviously familiar with the Affordable Housing Trust, but the Housing Production Plan is being written right now. So, you know, and that's a five-year sort of thing where you only get one shot every five years. So to incorporate that kind of idea with the CPC and the master plan, you know, that might be a, we might be a forum in which we can help, you know, point eyeballs in the correct direction.
Okay. Great.
Before you vote, just to clarify, and I know we talked about it, we kind of do this every time we have a, a set of warrant articles. We are only voting to, you know, just for anybody that's paying attention or anybody that is wondering, we're only voting to accept these for inclusion in the warrant at this point. We're not voting to, you know, to recommend them or approve them or anything else. We're just voting to accept them into the warrants. Correct?
That's the theory.
You ask me this every year. I know, but are you, I got, all right.
I just, no, that, that's, so that's what we're doing for anybody watching. That's, that's kind of the point. We're just, this is not, you know, this is not us approving them or recommending them. We're just accepting them onto the warrant.
Oh, well, the town budget, we are literally.
Yeah, but that's different.
That's our, that's our, we're giving it our blessing as that goes forward to the.
Chris, why, why would I, but even, even with, with that, why would I accept something if I didn't recommend it at this particular stage? So if I hated electric vehicle charging stations, wouldn't I not vote to accept?
You do?
Yeah.
In, in the past, we've accepted things that we didn't necessarily approve of.
Yeah, mostly on zoning issues that, that come through, come through from the, from the planning board that we must by charter. It says the board shall accept articles to come through from certain other boards.
And that's all I'm pointing out, but that's all this is at this point. At, at a later date, when we discuss in the past, when we've discussed who will present a, a, an article and that type of stuff, we have, we have, we have approved of certain things or recommended certain things. But, but this isn't, this isn't the time that we typically do that, and that's not what these votes are. That's all I'm saying.
I, I actually do have, and I'm, I'm trying desperately to find it, of course. I think the first round of warrant articles that we approved, I had it up on my phone, ready to say something. But I did ask clarification from town council about this, because I know it does come up every single year as to what we're actually doing. Unfortunately, I can't find it at the moment. I'm trying to find it. But I think it's, it's pretty much that's, unless we are putting forward, we are sponsoring something. If we're sponsoring it, obviously, we're approving it. But if.
You do sponsor most of the articles. So the.
Except for planning and CPC is not our sponsor, correct?
No, probably not. But, but still, like you, you, I mean, most of the article, like budget, certainly, but.
The budget, the, you look at the ones that we're just voting on here, the, the revolving fund for the electric vehicles, that's definitely coming from us. The free cash appropriation is coming from us. That's our approval. But we've had those discussions. The ones that we haven't had any discussion on are the ones typically coming from the planning board. Although this year, I think most of them, we've had some type of discussion with along the way. Just by, by necessity. But I think to, and I get Chris's thoughts, because yeah, you know, we, but the charter does say that for a, an article sponsored by a multiple board committee, the board, the select board shall select, shall accept the, we have no choice. Even if we totally disagree with it, we have to accept it if it comes from a multiple member body as defined by the charter.
And let's say, let's say that it's not, let's say it's a, let's say it's a select board sponsored comment, but it's, but to your, I think to your points, it may not be something that all of you are on board for, but you, you want to put it to town meeting. So I mean, you're, you're looking at a guy who writes most of your sponsor comments. So if you, if you have a, if you have a, if you have, if you want to edit that and you want to say, you know, but this is not necessary, this is meant for town, I don't know, whatever you want to say, like to kind of allude to the point that, that you're looking for input from town meeting. Of course, we can add that into the comments.
So I, I did, so I did find it, yay. And it says, the only way for a warrant to be created is for the Board of Selectmen to authorize the warrant. They must include citizens petitions. Let's see, which they might not support under your, they might not support, but under the charter, they must also include certain articles from town officials, which, yeah. Then, of course, there are the articles they put on the warrant. And in her view, we are accepting articles for inclusion in the warrant sponsored by another party. Of course, if we are putting forth the articles like the budget, road acceptance, taking borrowing, then we are approving the articles which we are putting forth. So. So that's that. All right.
Natasha might have a comment?
Oh, okay.
I actually had a question and Greg, I don't, this came up at the school budget subcommittee recently, last week, actually, and I apologize for not bringing it up. I was so excited about your distribution. I know, I know. So the, the, the school SIS system that is part of the, one of the capital projects that, that was going to be built into, I think the pay-as-you-go. It's not going to be coming out of free cash.
Oh, right. I, yeah, student information systems.
Oh, sorry. I'm just using the, yeah.
No, it's okay.
Yes, this is that. So it came up that there are expenses for that, that are going to be coming in this year for, I guess, starting that transition of, you know, contract. And I, obviously, the, the understanding that I had, I wanted to get clarification from, from you is that the way that it's proposed is that the funding would not be for FY22, correct? So it would not be.
If it's in the capital plays, I'm not looking at it, but if it's in, if it's in that general fund, then, then you can't, you, so you can't spend it until FY22 because the, the town is appropriating that money. So July 1st, in, in theory, like technically, that's when you can start spending it. So if you have expenses this year for that new SIS system, I would recommend Wayne get with my new town accountant and figure out how we pay for that.
Well, that's what I wanted to see, when maybe your people can talk to my people kind of conversation and make sure that, that we can get this worked out. So it seemed like there are some time sensitive things, but before it gets too late down the road, I wanted to just, it just got brought up and I wanted to make sure, I don't know if there's like a funding consideration or how that would work, but, but I'll, I'll let, I'll let Wayne know to speak to the new accountant then.
Yeah, definitely. That's, I mean, that's all it takes. Like, and if we got to do, there's a couple of different options we, we can figure.
I figured there's a way to massage it. I mean, obviously, but I just didn't know. I wanted to make sure it was on the radar, just.
Thank you for telling me. And if you feel like you're not getting into the sort of like warm and fuzzies about it, please let me know.
Well, it, it was enough to pique my curiosity when they mentioned that there's, you know, there was, you know, file mitigation, that there are certain things that have to start sooner potentially. And so the timeline, just, I wanted to make sure that it's also awareness that we don't get the funding the way it is right now written until July 1st. So, okay. All right. Thank you.
And that's the thing, just to clarify, that nobody gets any of the funding for, for FY22 until July 1st. So no one can spend any, anything until that day. So, yeah.
Well, I don't know, like with like free, again, the other stuff, I know that's kind of like comes in, it gets approved at town. I, I think that, that there are certain parts that could be spent, but I know because capital projects sometimes have come out of that separately, like in the years past, but the way.
Difficult. That's difficult.
It is, right, right.
We're actually trying to go back to the better way of budgeting, which is.
Which is the better way. It is the better way. I just want to make sure that we're in sync with the better way as well.
Yeah, no, that's all good. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else have any questions about any of the warrant articles? All right. Well, then, all in favor, Jeff?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
And I am a yes. All right. Next, we are. Next, we are going to discuss approving the date, time and place for the annual town meeting. And I will entertain a motion.
I'll move to endorse the change of date, time and place for the annual town meeting to a date of Saturday, May 15th, 2021, and a new time of 12:00 PM noon to be held at Mill and Main South Parking Lot.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Armand. Greg, do you have any?
Yeah, no. So this is just a, a sort of a reintroduction of, of the concept that was brought up last town meeting, presented by town moderator Dick Downey and endorsed by myself in my office to change it. I think the board is, is all in favor of the location and the date change, when not. But there was a question about the time. So Dick Downey is advocating for noon. I don't think he's on the call tonight. So if you don't want to do noon, you can, you can amend the, you can amend the motion, but if you want to do noon, the town staff will support anytime.
Okay. I think we, I mean, we discussed it last week or last meeting about it. I know that David had brought up, you know, just this, that that's a consideration that it might be difficult for, for people. But unfortunately, I think that, you know, I'm, I'm hoping that people who want to come to town meeting will make the town meeting part the priority. You know, unfortunately, it might miss, it might be missing something, but we're, we're new to having things planned too, as that hasn't really happened yet. As that hasn't really happened yet. Um, does anyone have any comments about it? Alright, then all in favor, uh, David?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And I am a yes. So that works. Alright, and we have reached the town administrator report.
I think I've spoken it up, but I'll, I'll just highlight a couple of things. Um, unfortunately, I don't have good news when, I mean, I don't have any news when it comes to getting a clinic in town. We've been trying to get, we've been trying to get a clinic in, in town or at least close, closer to town than Natick, I think is the next closest, uh, clinical location. Which is not the furthest, but it's not, it's not what we're looking for. So, um, but no, I, I don't have any update for the board to say that it's coming. Coming to town anytime soon. Although, as I decide, I did, I have signed up for the state's pre-registration site, so I, I encourage the board and the public to sign up for that if you haven't already. Um, but we, we are still doing, we have been doing regular meetings. I may not. I, I, if we try to kind of keep the team on the same page, if there's new information about the possibility or opportunities or planning for a possible. Um, clinic in town or surrounding towns, but there's, there's no action on it yet. Were you gonna, did you have a question?
Can I, yeah, I'm sorry. Can I just interrupt for one second? Um, so I want to double check though, because I, I know that something. We've tried really hard to, to get the word out as far as that we are trying to host and it's not a matter of not having volunteers. It's not, uh, not wanting to, not having a space, not having the equipment. I mean, it's literally the fact that we're not, we, we can't access. The vaccines.
Yeah, they're not giving it to, yeah, no, no, yeah, it's not in the town. It's, um, the state shifted their, their strategy. So the, for the public who doesn't know this, the, the state, the state was originally very. Like, uh, cooperative with some local boards of health, but I think a lot of regional, um, approaches. So that's how our public safety. Personnel, they went over to Concord and got Concord. So, um, but then the, in the last couple of weeks, the state shifted. So now they, they really only distributed to either. Already approved regional sites and those are kind of few and far between, but mostly to the, the state. Mass vaccination sites. You're familiar with Foxborough, uh, um. Fenway and Natick. Again, I think it's the closest one.
When you said originally they were cooperative with boards of health, you're talking like early February, but back in early January. What was the status of cooperation between the state and the town?
It was, it was alright, but we didn't have all our, we, we weren't quite yet prepared.
Was there an indicate, my understanding from our conversations in January was that there was no indication that boards of health would be given the vaccine. At that point.
No, they would if we were prepared to receive it, but we had to, we, we had to, because other boards of health did get it, but we didn't have. We didn't have a refrigerator at the time. We weren't in their state registration system, like their register system to receive. So there was a couple of logistical hurdles we had to get. And by the time we were prepared, the state had already shifted the focus. Like we were, we were on the cusp and I remember like discussing that we would have, like, we were so close that Kelly Polatonic, the health agent was talking about like the next week. Get, you know, starting a, a quick, you know, clinic in the bottom of town hall.
The staff time is, is I feel is lost that's spent on that. What about the refrigerator or physical items that we purchased in preparation that are no longer being used? Because the state shifted course.
That's fair. We do have a refrigerator now, um, but the state paid for it. So it's, so it, besides some space that we lost in the dispatch. I think, I think it's, um, I, I think it's good, you know, I'm not going to give back the refrigerator in time soon. Hopefully the state's not listening, but we, we do want to. I think we still need to be prepared if and when maybe the opportunity does come. Also, it's not such a bad thing that, that we went through the exercise, right? So we, I think, I think if we, we, we've learned, I think it was a very good. Collaboration amongst s- school staff, town staff, um, uh, Emerson Hospital staff, who we have our, 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 our nursing, um, support through. And so it was great conversations. We just weren't able to get it to, to fruition. Um, but if and when we can get some, because it, so again, still a large population of the Commonwealth has not had their vaccines. Probably the majority of people on the screen haven't had theirs yet. So. I'm still got my fingers crossed that they start giving out some vaccines a little closer to home, in which case we'll be ready to receive.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry, I didn't mean to derail you a little bit, but.
No, it's not. I'm, I wanted to, I brought it up. I want, I wanted to bring it up, uh, but only mostly to voice my frustration. Like I was, I was proud of the team. That, that we were able to get some good planning underway. It just didn't, just didn't come to fruition. Um, because I have Justin on, I would be remiss if I don't, if I don't kind of highlight some of the things related to public works. Um, which he has, has been good enough to provide a map of some of the, um. Uh, pavement management program, which really, really means the roads that he's going to be, uh, that he has contracted to work on. Um, so if the public is curious about what the Rose Roads are, uh, they are on the TA report. Um. I think those are the main things, but I mean, there's a lot of stuff that's in the TA report per usual. So I'm always very proud of the staff for their contributions to it. Um, municipal service is always is busy, so please, uh, for the general public, please take a look at the TA report. We're going to put it on the website. And, uh, it really highlights all the good work that the town staff is doing. That's it, Madam Chair.
Alright, no, thank you. Anyone have any questions for Greg? Alright. My chair report. Um, I don't have anything prepared. Uh, I did want to speak a little bit to, um, there's been some. You know, Natasha referenced some, um. Some issues on social media over the past week, um, in regards to, uh, the election coming up. And, uh, how people are, um, treating their neighbors, um, on social media. And I just want to remind everybody that we are all people. Um, and we are all neighbors living in this community and we need to work to. Be tolerant and kind. To people and I would be really encouraged, um, to. Make sure that if you have questions about a candidate, um, I've, I've done this, I've gone through this. So I, I'm speaking from, you know, my experience and, um, if you have questions of a candidate, please reach out to them, ask them. Um, but I would really ask that people remember the fact that we are a very small town and, um. And we are all people and I really hope that we can move forward from here. And, uh, and that's all I'm going to say for tonight. Um, and I will turn it over to David.
No, I really don't have much tonight, other, other than tomorrow is the Feast of Saint Patrick, as somebody mentioned earlier, um. In the meeting, so, um, Happy Saint Patrick's Day to, uh. To all, to everybody. It's, it's a day that, uh, is, is very special. So thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Chris?
I've been baking, I've been baking Arizona bread for days, David.
Why aren't you sharing any?
Yeah.
Bunch of them, you know, you just get dragged by, I'll throw them out the window.
Hey, I got the Guinness ready, come on over.
That's right, I'll bring a couple cigars and Guinness.
There you go.
Um, no, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't really have, um. I didn't, I didn't have anything. It was tonight, our first night is the, of select board officially.
No, last meeting.
No, it was last meeting.
You missed it. You missed the celebration.
Signed the thing last week in this, but I thought this was the first meeting, it was full on the, the name, but maybe not.
But yes.
Just a question. But anyways, I didn't, I didn't have anything prepared, but again, I, I, I think I've seen a lot of the same things that you saw, Justine, and it's. It's actually, it's disturbing and distressing in a sense, but I, you know, people have asked me what, like what we as a select would would do about it and I'm like. We don't have any say over it. It's people, people being people and treating each other that way, but I would suggest. You know, if you have a question about something, someone put out to you about a candidate, reach out to that candidate and ask the question. You know. Go to the source, but it's, it's crazy. That's it. I didn't have anything else prepared.
Alright, sounds good. Uh, Jeff?
Uh, yeah, I, uh, stopped by, um, Manor Nutrition, which is a, a new business that we, um, uh, approved license for a while back. And just wanted to report back, just friendly upbeat staff and I had the Thin Mint Shake, it was quite good. Um, Six Bridges has a new, uh, exhibit up. Um, it's a group show from, from their own artists this time. And so I, I recommend people check that out. Uh, and then at the EDC meeting the other day, Tim Hess presented, um. Uh, a presentation of Naylor Court, which I think was really interesting and is. Fairly radically different from some of the other kind of more minor changes. And I think this kind of highlights what you were mentioning, Justine, the other week about. You know, that long-term planning having was in place and, and how it's really planning for the future and building up, um, for, for when. Uh, we have visitors from, say, the state or, or grant funding opportunities. So, um, I, I encourage people to take a look. I think Tim has it up on, on In Situ's website. Um, I don't know if it's the EDC notes or not, but, um, yeah, just, just kind of interesting to, to. See what could be done with that space that, uh, hasn't necessarily been presented before. So that's it for me.
Great, thank you. Uh, Armand?
Yeah, if you haven't seen that presentation, please take a look at it. It's, um, you know, he's very creative and, and I think that space is going to be. Um, something that'll become a destination for the surrounding towns. And if you, if you, uh. If you have an opportunity, take a look at it. Uh, one of the things that I wanted to mention, first and foremost, if you haven't read the newsletter from, uh, the, uh. Mainland Council on Aging, you should take a look at it. It's a pretty interesting newsletter. Um, I was able to, uh, arrange an initial meeting between Brian Haas and, and Jerry Beck. Um, they had a very, uh, productive meeting where they're going to try to see how they could collaborate. When it comes to, um, partnering up between art space and the school system. And, um, Brian is very, very enthusiastic about, um, the opportunities and this is just the beginning, it's just the kickoff and. Uh, there'll be even more meetings to try to see what would be the next step. Um, the part that I spend a lot of time the past year is, uh. Uh, serving on the Housing Production Planning, um, Committee, uh, I don't know what it's called Committee. Uh, but they are, are ready to have, uh, forum in June. They're going to be a public forum in June. And they're going to finalize the plan after that, and then they're going to come to the select board and planning board, uh, meetings. And present it probably sometime in July and August. Um, for adoption of the plan. One of the things that I find is very enlightening and I'm probably, I'm sure will be a lot of you know already, but through the study, they found that. There is, um, uh, very, um, needed opportunities and options for senior housing. Um, that's going to be something that we need to take a look at. Uh, rental options are, are limited in the town, so you have to have more rental options for, um, non-owner occupied. Uh, you know, uh. Facilities or buildings and, um, the housing for the, uh, to support the town culture. And that's something that's been discussed, uh, even, even further. So at the next meeting, we're going to have probably a little bit more of a discussion about that. And how that comes into play. Um, and, and in general, just housing options for all ages. I mean, that you, there, there's, um, there's a need for it. Um, and, um, we are making progress. Um, the, uh, gentleman Alex Kupman did a great job of. Telling us that we're making progress in general based on the survey. Um, so we are moving in the right direction. Uh, but, uh, still, you know, needs improvement. But so I think back in, but around July and August, we're going to see, uh, the final. Report, the plan.
Chris?
Yeah, that's all I got to say.
Alright, sounds good. Well then I will entertain a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Do you have a second? Thank you. If you're all in favor.
Have a great night, everybody.
Good night.
Thank you.